I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Could we have a sunshine announcement, please?
Yes. Good evening, Chairman. Today is Tuesday, May 27th in the year 2025. This is a Jersey City Planning Board meeting with a scheduled 5:30 PM start time. And in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting has been given to the editor of the Bergen Record, Ellis Belito, and posted with the city clerk on May 23rd of this year. This meeting was also posted on the Jersey City Division of City Planning webpage, and all distribution materials made available to the board were published and made available to the public.
Thank you, Kim. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Acting Vice Chair Gangadin.
Here.
Commissioner Torres.
Here.
Commissioner Cruz.
Here.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Here.
Commissioner Patel.
Here.
And Chairman Langston.
Here.
All right. We have a quorum. We have six commissioners present.
Thank you. Could we swear on the staff, please? Mike?
I see Matt, Sophia, Tanya, Zindru, and Eric in camp. Do you guys swear anything? I think it's the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Do we have correspondence?
Yes, Chairman. We have one item that issued us a letter today via email requesting to carry, and that is the very last item under new business, item 19. That is case P 2024-0224, preliminary and final major subdivision. They've requested to be carried with preservation of notice to July 15th, and the address on that is 222 to 236 Carney Avenue.
Okay. Thanks, Kim.
All right. And we marked the sunshine as B1.
Okay, thank you. All right. So let's get right into old business. Case P 2025-0065 is a 190-day subdivision extension. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Veronica Schmeele from Connell Foley. On behalf of the applicant, I am covering for Thomas Lean tonight. We did notice for this, so I do have the original notice, which I believe was uploaded in advance, if I may approach.
Please.
Chair, I've had the opportunity to review the notice. It does appear to be in order. We're going to mark it as A1. This was originally noticed for the May 15th meeting and carried to tonight with preservation of that notice.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
Thank you, counsel.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So the applicant here received minor subdivision approval under P 2024-0067 by resolution dated September 10th of last year. So the subdivision need to be perfected by March 19th of this year. Applicant now seeks an extension of the time to be able to file that subdivision approval. There is an existing mortgage on the property that is preventing the perfection. The owner is now, the new owner, as of last year, is asking for a little bit additional time to pay off the note in full and make sure that the property is unencumbered.
Okay. Thank you, counsel. Any questions? Anyone?
No.
Okay. Is there anybody here from the public that wants to comment? Anyone from public?
Chair, see no one from public. I would like to close the public portion.
Second.
All right. Motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. General, anything you want to add?
Yeah, just want to ask the applicant to comply with the conditions in the original approval.
Yes, we agree.
With that, our staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P 2025-0065 as presented, together with staff recommendation and conditions from the original approval.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second for approval.
Acting Vice Chair Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, counsel. All right, let's move on to item B. It's case P 2025-0069. It's an extension of a final major site plan approval with deviations for 78 Bishop Street.
Veronica Schmeele, Law Firm Connell Foley, on behalf of the applicant. We also provided notice for this case as well, the original of which was uploaded on Tyler in advance, if I may come up?
Sure.
Chair, I see the affidavit and notice proof of publication with respect to the application. It does appear to be in order. We are going to mark it as A1 for purposes of record. And again, I note that this was originally scheduled for the prior meeting in May and was carried through tonight.
Thank you, counsel.
Okay, so the applicant here, Bishop Street 78 LLC, they are seeking a one-year extension of their approvals. They obtained their approval under case number P 23-014. The resolution was dated April 25th, 2023, so the approvals did expire this year. We are requesting one-year extension to April 25th of next year, the reason being the previous owners had obtained this approval, the current applicants had recently purchased it, and they just are requesting a little bit of time to get up to speed with the project and finalize their construction jacket and pull permits and whatnot.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Any questions? Anyone?
No.
Is there anybody here from public that wants to comment? Anyone from public?
Chair, see no one from public. I would like to close the public portion.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Camp, anything?
The existing conditions still apply?
Yes, we agree.
Okay. I'm placing staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P 2025-0069 as presented to the board, together with staff recommendation and conditions from original approval.
Second.
All right, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Acting Vice Chair Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
Okay.
Thank you all.
All right, let's move on to case P 2025-0075. It is an administrative amendment for 200 Monticello Avenue. Good evening, counsel.
Good evening. Rebecca Mariello. I'm an associate attorney at Connell Foley. Unfortunately, I'm not Thomas Lean. A few of us are here tonight comforting for him as he's on a very well-deserved vacation this week. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Monticello 200 LLC. I have the notices that were sent out on this case, counsel, if I may approach and mark this as A1.
Okay. Thank you, man. I appreciate it.
Chair, I see the affidavit and notice proof of publication with respect to the application. It's 17 Jewett Ave., 20204 Monticello Avenue here in the city. Does appear to be in order. We're going to mark it as A1 for purpose of the record.
Thank you. We are here tonight seeking amended final major site plan approval. For this applicant, this property is located at 72 Jewett Avenue, designated as block 16801, lot 45.01. This property is located in the Jackson Hill redevelopment plan area. By way of brief background, on September 6th of 2022, this board granted an application by this applicant for preliminary and final site plan approval for the construction of a five-story building consisting of 38 residential units, 2,331 square feet of ground floor retail commercial space. We're here tonight seeking amended approval. We're still going to construct a five-story building. We're decreasing the unit count from 38 units to 36, so we're decreasing by two units. Specifically, we're removing two ground floor units, and we're going to increase the ground floor retail commercial space to 3,816 square foot retail space. Specifically, the space is going to accommodate a daycare-school. The proposed tenant is currently working with the Board of Ed right now to open up this space, should it be approved by the board tonight. And the second through fifth floor plans are unchanged from the prior application. So the only thing that's getting changed, that the proposed change is for the ground floor. Lastly, I want to note that we're in receipt of the city's planning report dated May 22nd, 2025, and the applicant agrees all the conditions stated therein. As my first and only witness, I want to call Jeffrey Lewis.
Hi. Yes, I do. Jeffrey Lewis, J E F F R E Y L E W I S.
Mr. Lewis, good evening. Your license is current tonight?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Thank you. Okay, so we have the plans up. As was mentioned, there were no major changes here. There are no exterior changes proposed to the building. The building was actually built as it was approved, and then this tenant came to us asking us for a little more space on the ground floor. So what we can see on the left, what was built, which is the retail commercial space in the front and those two apartments in the back over here, and then to the right, we see what we're proposing here. So what we're proposing is to eliminate those two apartments, convert that space to commercial. That would increase that space to 3,816 square feet and reduce the residential units from 38 to 36. Just to walk through very briefly, Monticello Avenue is on the bottom of this drawing, and Jewett Avenue is on the right. So we're proposing the main daycare entry would be at Jewett Avenue over here. The original commercial space was broken into three separate classrooms. The two new spaces, the first apartment is being used as a break room and an office, and the second apartment is being used as classroom number four. There are just a few minor changes that we had to make to accommodate this new use. All of the bathtubs were removed, the washer dryers were removed, and in that classroom space, we removed a couple walls to open that space up. And then, as was mentioned, the planning report did request six outdoor bike spaces, and that's something we can work with planning to find room for. That really is all the changes we're proposing here. I'm happy to answer any questions about it you may have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. I have no questions. Anybody else?
Yeah, I just, Mr. Lewis, I just want to double check with you. The entrance now in the hallway on your left-hand side that goes, used to go to the apartments, now it's going to be just an exit only for emergency?
Yes, emergency exit for the daycare.
For the daycare?
Yes.
So nobody from there that's going upstairs could go into that door?
Yeah, this door, this door here would have a fire door with an alarm, and you wouldn't be able to open it from that direction.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Lewis, why are your pointers there? That stair to the right side, right where your pointer is, that's the down or that's the up?
This is going up to the second floor. There are a few steps down here to get to the street.
Okay, so that door doesn't open up into the egress of the stair?
No, that's correct. It does not.
That emergency door?
That's right. Yeah, the stair, the bottom of the stair is right here to the left and goes up, and there's nothing going down.
Okay, understood. All right, anybody else? Any questions?
Yeah, is there a drop-off?
We're not proposing any changes to the, to the street at all.
And then that space that is the upper left-hand, so you got like, it's like you threw that box over it, and so that's just going to be dead space or?
I'm sorry, where are we talking about?
So where your arrow is.
Here now?
Above it, yeah.
This is going to be a break room for the people who work at the daycare.
But above that?
Above that, this is a backyard.
Okay.
This is yard space that would be accessed from the break room.
And then what's capacity for students?
Um, I don't know the number. I mean, it's four classrooms. It should be 60 if it's at it, right?
And the remaining will be E-coded.
Excuse me?
E-coded for the remainder of the addition, for education.
Yeah, yeah, yes, yes, of course.
Okay, anybody else?
No.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Thanks.
Counsel, that's your presentation?
I don't know if that works. Yes, I submit we have nothing further to present before the board. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody here from public that wants to comment? Anyone from public?
Chair, see no one from public. I would like to close the public portion.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Eric, do you have anything you want to add?
Not too much to add. Staff agrees with the testimony provided by the applicant's professionals. As we all heard, the professional agreed to the conditions enumerated in the staff memo. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P 2025-0075 as presented to the board, together with staff recommendation approval.
Do I have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval.
Acting Vice Chair Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, counsel. All right, let's move on to item D. It is case P 2024-0178. This is the review and discussion of Fayette Broadway redevelopment plan amendment. This zoning requirements for Zone 3, formal action may be taken.
My name is Eugene Paulino. I'm with the firm of Genova Burns, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant. The applicant is Avenue West Side Square LLC and West Broadway Corbin LLP. The ones the developer, the others the owner. This is an amendment to the Fayette redevelopment, redevelopment plan. There was a prior redevelopment plan, the original redevelopment plan, that was passed in September of '24. This seeks simply to amend Zone 3. The reason why, Zone 3 relates to the east side of vacated West Side Avenue. West Side Avenue dead ends at that location. It was vacated by the city, and this development is to the east side. You might know it best as the location where Puccini's Restaurant used to be. The applicant seeks to change Zone 3 to allow for the construction of a change in that location. You may ask why in September of '24, this was not part of the original redevelopment plan. Here I am in May, almost June. The reason for that is we were in fact ready for submission at that point in time. However, planning division had some issues with respect to clarity. They wanted some assurances as to construction of a plaza. There's a plaza that's involved in this, and as a result, we, they continued with the, the, the original redevelopment plan, and we slid this off to this date. The existing condition of the property is, is interesting. There's a building called Urcolano's, we call it the Urcolano Building. There's a deli there, and it's on the first floor. It's a four-floor, a former manufacturing building. The other three floors are vacant. It has historic preservation qualities that we're addressing. There is a building called the Puccini Building, which is a one-story floor, memorable meals, but I don't think the, the building is historical in any way. But adjacent to it, adjacent to it, I didn't mean to make you laugh, believe it or not, adjacent to it is, is a stone building, a brownstone building, which is uninhabitable. It is vacant, right? We had engaged with the historic preservation officer, Maggie O'Neil, and went through a number of iterations as to how this should be dealt with. And the way this is, the way the Urcolano Building and this other uninhabited building is dealt with is that interesting way, is that the facade is retained, and a piece of the, of the sides are retained, and then the rest of the building is developed, it is incorporated, and the development that's proposed. There have been a number of community meetings that we've attempted to organize and were organized by others, by Mira Prinzere, who was, was on your board. One meeting was, it was several months ago, November 14th, actually. The city was there, the architect engineer was there, Department of Transportation of the city was there, and a number of community people. So we had a fairly good turnout. There was a more recent meeting last week, as a matter of fact, in which there were a number of people who turned up, and we went through a similar presentation. There were concerns, to be very frank, there were concerns that were raised by the community, but the concerns seem to be divided into two different things. I don't want to speak for them, but you'll see that it relates to an existing construction contract, construction area, and then this area. The, the changes to the redevelopment plan include control of when the vacated West Side Avenue would be developed as a plaza, because that is not going to be built on. There's not going to, there's no building that's going to go on that, that vacated street. It's going to be open public plaza maintained by the developer. And there's another area on the other side, on Corbin Avenue, which is presently a city street, which is going to be redelivered to the city as open space, but is not going to be developed in terms of a building or anything that's, that's going on, on it. You'll hear testimony from only two witnesses. The witnesses are Bruce Stevie, who's the architect, and Gold Aspire, who's a planner. I just want to take a brief moment, and I won't be long, but to list the amount of community benefits here. This is a property that will be subject to affordable housing. It contains, the Puccini Building will be removed. It's presently vacant, and it's not, you know, useful right now. The three floors of the, of the factory, on the bottom floor, which is the Urcolano Deli, they will be placed back into the tax rolls. And as I said before, vacated West Side Avenue will be developed as a public plaza with pavers and, you know, that kind of thing. And Corbin Avenue will be open to the, to the public as well. There is a temple at the end of the street. To date, we've, the redeveloper has allowed kind of a free flow for the, for pedestrians and I guess cars to get to the temple. With the opening of Corbin on the other side, that will probably be the entrance to that temple. That's it. I want you to hear the testimony of the two witnesses. The changes, as I said before, to this proposal, and you understand that this is a redevelopment plan amendment that will require the municipal council to approve, so you're a, you're a recommending body. The, the changes only relate to Zone 3, east of West, of vacated West, West Side Avenue, and the rest of the, the redevelopment plan stays the same. I think there were some clerical changes, you know, just clerical, you know, a the or an is or something like that, and the rest of the thing that was picked up on doing this change, but other than that, the, the rest of the changes are all Zone 3. Let me call my first witnesses. It's Bruce Stevie, Marchado Higgins and Steve.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
So counsel, obviously, in light of your comments and for the public's certification, we're not going to be hearing a site plan this evening. At some point, a site plan will come forth in theory that if the board were to make the recommendation, although obviously the council has the ability to do whatever the council does, this body is just looking to see consistency with the master plan in terms of the amendment.
That's exactly right.
To the redevelopment plan, so.
That's exactly, and I, at both community meetings, I tried to make that very clear, that this is a redevelopment plan. We still have to come before this board and get a site plan approval and go through the entire process in that regard.
Well, and for the public's certification, right now, the only thing this board does is look to see consistency with the master plan.
Exactly.
And then, in order to amend the redevelopment plan, only the city council can take that action, which, of course, counsel, you understand.
Yes, it is a city ordinance, and can only be amended by the municipal body.
So I don't know how much Mr. Stevie wants to be showing of potentially the proposed development of the site. I would ask that we keep it limited, because I don't want anybody to think that that does become the end product.
Yes.
Guaranteed.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much.
I do. My name is Bruce Stevie, S T I E V E.
Mr. Stevie, good evening. Your license is current?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Thank you. So we're here tonight, and again, just to give a brief overview of a concept for the proposed amendments to Fayette Broadway redevelopment plan. I have here a map, and outlined in red is the redevelopment plan area, and then shaded in white, it highlights that redevelopment area, and the proposed project is in the red square shape in the center of the project. The site is bound by Broadway, the vacated West Side Square, Corbin Avenue to the east, and then the Sikh Temple property to the north, and then the path tracks further north of that. The site is located in Zone 3 of the Fayette Broadway redevelopment area, and it occupies about 29,641 square feet or .68 acres. As Mr. Paulino mentioned, we've been working with Jersey City Planning and the Preservation, Historic Preservation Commission of the City of Jersey City to integrate two historically significant facades. The first is 1072 West Side Avenue. In speaking with Preservation Commission, they asked that we maintain a minimum eight feet of the building facade, so from the front facade facing West Side Avenue, eight feet back into the building. It was also requested when we were speaking with them that the facades be integrated into the design of the building and not necessarily appear pasted on, but rather integral into the building design, the concept building design. The second preservation opportunity was for 54 Broadway. This is the last of the three brownstones remaining on Broadway in this location. It has the green facade. It's to the left of the red line that you see on the screen. Again, it was asked that we maintain 15 feet from the front of this facade back into the, the building. This is a concept rendering of how we might propose to do that. You can see on the, let me get my controller here. You can see in, in this location, the, what we're calling the Urcolano Building facade, that has been retained and designed to become an integral part of the base of the building, as well as the brownstone on Broadway. The, the remaining corner of the building is conceived to be industrial in nature, to build on the language of the Urcolano Building. It will wrap at that four-story elevation. The redevelopment plan has certain guidelines, 15 feet setback on the ground floor from Broadway, and that's to create a generous sidewalk and, and opportunity for activities leading into the West Side Square Plaza. And then, and then the building goes up for, to the fourth floor, and then steps back 15 feet again from Broadway to the, to the remaining floors of the building. There's also, we've created an eight-foot setback on West Side Avenue, again, to respect the, the, the building depth on, of the Urcolano Building. This is a concept ground floor plan. This really just diagrams the 15-foot setback on, on Broadway. So with that and the existing 16-foot sidewalk, the building will be set back approximately 23 feet at the ground floor, providing opportunities for activities on the ground floor outside. As was mentioned, a section of Corbin Avenue that is currently under ownership of this developer will be dedicated back to the city to allow free access along Corbin to the back of the site and the sites behind us. It's anticipated that all loading, move-ins, deliveries will happen inside the building, coming in off of Corbin Avenue, as well as access to any required parking for the building. This is a conceptual upper level plan that shows the building step backs that, that comport with the amendments to the redevelopment plan. Again, above the fourth floor, the building will step back 15 feet along Broadway and eight feet along West Side Square. This is just an overall view of a concept idea for the This is just an overall view of a concept idea for the building. It shows the existing building under construction to the west of West Side Square, the proposed building to the east of West Side Square, and other developments that are happening in the neighborhood, again, further to the right of the page.
But again, just for everybody's clarification, we're not hearing a site plan tonight. This is the change to the redevelopment plan, so that rendering is not in front of us tonight.
I had a question. Why are we looking at this? I mean, if there's something in the redevelopment plan, then I should be reading something to change the redevelopment plan. I'm looking at something like, this happens all the time, this has gone around for years, and it's the same conversation, very confusing to the public. Anybody sitting here thinks that I'm going to be voting on a project for a developer, and I'm making a change to an amendment for a developer to build something, and that's not the case right now. I said, I just spent, whether the sidewalk is at the, what the redevelopment plan calls for, it's not relevant right now in this conversation, and we keep doing this all the time.
Well, the, the sidewalk.
It's part of the plan, but what he's showing me doesn't mean that's what they're going to build. I don't know that, so I, by showing to me the measurement of the sidewalk now, really, why? Why am I looking at it? I don't understand.
Well, we want the measurements that are.
We want it to be what the redevelopment. When they come back with their site plan.
No, that's, no, that's the changes that we're hearing tonight.
Okay.
Changes to the physical redevelopment plan, but.
Seeing this.
The nice.
It's a hard, I, I, committee man, Mr. Torres, I, I absolutely agree with you. It's hard to, it's hard for, for people that are not familiar with what we, what we do to understand that, you know, we're not talking about a particular building, we're talking about a generic location. And, but however, the redevelopment plan is a zoning document, so it has to have, a lot of the time, dimensions, you know, like it's going to be this far setback, or that, or that high, or this. And so, it's, my attempt is always to try to make it real, and maybe that confuses people, and I hope it doesn't, because we kind of try to repeat, and I repeat it in community meetings.
But that, that's the confusion. I understand.
I get it.
And I understand, this is a conversation we have for years. I understand that we need to see, it can be done in writing, but when I'm looking at this like this, it's, it's just very, why am I looking at this?
Absolutely, I got it.
And it's, it's tough on the public. They're, they're looking at a rendering, and it looks great, it's a great picture, but it's, it's not, you know, the, the hard facts of what we're looking at tonight.
And clearly, when there is, when there is a specific building that you want to build, with all the dimensions and all the sidewalk, you know, measurements, and the heights, and the size of the rooms, and everything that's involved, we've got to come back and do that, but that's not tonight.
No, and we'll dig in both hands when that comes back to us, but, you know, let's stick to just the numbers now.
Why don't we get to the amendments to the redevelopment plan, and how they're consistent with the master plan?
That's it.
Before he goes, anything for Mr. Stevie?
No.
Thank you, sir.
This, I'm introducing as witness Golda Spire from Topology, and she'll take it from there.
Golda Spire, I have my business card in case you need it. G.O.L.D.A., last name S.P.E.Y.E.R.
Ms. Spire, good evening. I don't believe we've ever qualified you, it's your first time here?
I've been before this board, it's been years, a project on Communipaw, but I've testified before this board, actually back in 2017, worked for the Department of Community Development for the city, since more than five years out, but I've also testified before the Jersey City Zoning Board as well.
Okay.
And I have my license, I'm a planner, and my master's in city and regional planning, and my AICP.
Okay, and that license is current tonight?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, you're qualified then.
So just kind of hearing the feedback, I presume copies of these plans have been with the board, and to, I don't want to like itemize every single amendment, but it is Zone Three. I don't know if you want me to just turn to the page numbers, and then I'll get right into the master plan consistency, I'm just trying to.
Are we able to share what those changes are on the screen, or is it something that you're going to need?
If you wish. I, I haven't planned for that, because it's, it's, it's just that one section.
If we could, let's get you on mic, counsel. Just so the recording.
Recording's not picking you up.
I'm sorry, so I, I, it's in a portal, we haven't, I haven't gotten it on a, I can't put it on the screen, at least I can't put it on the screen, I don't even know how.
Which section of the redevelopment plan are we referring to?
Sure, so it's page 20.
Cam, can you help us out?
Can you bring something up for us, Cam?
I got it. If you go in the portal, I mean, but getting to the portal, you're going to need Cam, because if you go in the portal, it brings you to the artist, and if you go into the search under the case.
Counsel, if you have it on your laptop and want to put it on the screen, I'll accept I don't know where he got his tan, not New Jersey.
Definitely New Jersey, I haven't been anywhere.
Yeah, okay.
But your fingerprints are all over this document, I see all the edits.
No, this is the one that's on the portal.
Right, the redevelopment.
I'm just going to scroll.
Thank you, counsel. It's on your screens.
Yep.
Okay, going down to page 20, so this is Zone Three. And Zone Three is actually divided into two parcel, not two parcels, but two, we'll call it, areas of land, the west side and the east side, and there is a site plan that has been approved, it's been in construction, and if you're looking at the bird's eye aerial, that would be on the east, I'm sorry, the west side of West Side Avenue. The intention, no zoning changes, that would remain in place, so we're really focusing on that key piece of land to the east side. And so as counsel said, what is relevant here in a redevelopment plan is it is your zoning code, it's your zoning ordinance, it supersedes. And so what I'm just going to skim through, and I'll, I'll kind of hit on the points, but what we're looking at here is zoning to that area that wasn't really previously zoned for land use. So, a project, when you have a redevelopment plan, you need to have a project, and so that's what the zoning is envisioned through communications with the city planning division, neighborhood meetings, through this developer, and a real collaborative project, well thought out, and intended to be, you know, memorialized in this plan, and through a redevelopment agreement to have public benefit give back. So I'll, I'll get into that consistency in a moment, but the high points is that a public plaza will be incorporated into the plan, zoning parameters allowing for a mixed-use residential building up to 18 stories, as well as that historic preservation, but these will be all, the amendment is putting that zoning into place. So, for the sake of not repeating too much, I would like to just get into the master plan consistency at this point, unless there's any specific questions. Okay, so, under the municipal land use law, and what we have here is another layer of New Jersey law, which is the local redevelopment housing law, the city has conducted a rehab study of this area, which allows the city to enable such a redevelopment plan. It was found as an area in need of rehab, this parcel amongst others, and so this is really in response to that. And within the redevelopment plan, which is already adopted, it speaks to a requirement of being substantially consistent with the master plan, and to effectuate that master plan, which is a pretty recent master plan, actually, in the city. So I'm going to do a twofold thing, I'm just going to do a macro, how this redevelopment plan continues to still be consistent with the master plan, and then get micro into the redevelopment plan, this amendment, and, and what the master plan speaks to. So, there's a couple chapters within your master plan, I'm going to mostly speak to the land use element in this regard, and what your master plan says on a macro level, which lays back to this redevelopment plans, is it really recognizes the need for a scale of buildings, and a mix of buildings, and housing. So, page six to seven specifically of the redevelopment, I'm sorry, of the, yes, of the redevelopment plan, cross-references your master plan. It speaks to continuing efforts to enhancing residential neighborhoods through this mix of various buildings. It talks about different types of variety of building typologies between townhomes, mid-rise apartments, as well as high-rise apartments. It speaks to consistency with the Journal Square neighborhood, and the path, and buildings that respond to activate that type of environment. What the redevelopment plan says that cross-references to the master plan, it also speaks to about strengthening neighborhood-oriented commercial centers through transit stations, and this is all going to relay back in a moment to my, the Zone Three, but as you can see, we are looking to do a public plaza in respect to a envisioned future path station here. So this is what I would say really responsive to all these key points. And then lastly, it speaks to ensuring the city's available housing is balanced, and that all current and future residents are part of this diversity, as well as inclusionary housing. So, getting a little micro now into Zone Three specific, what the general theme of this amendment is, is it's taken what is really an underutilized parcel that's really not reflective of your R3 zone anymore. There is that adjacent parcel that was approved by site plan, actually by use variance in 2019 for high-rise, because at the time, it was a high-rise apartment proposed in the R3 that was a mid-rise, low-rise neighborhood, and that, that speaks a little bit of volumes as to where this neighborhood's going, is a different type of building typology, that's more mixed use. As you saw in the aerial that was presented under the architect, this is that donut hole in the redevelopment plan, so absent of this zoning, there is kind of no zoning, it's a weird floating zone right now, and so we're trying to establish, you know, what is that consistency with what the other zones are, Zones One, Two, and Four, and what their typologies allow, as well as what has been kind of happening in the trends over here. So, it also is responsive to activating what is going to be a path station that really isn't going to be, I wouldn't say impossible, but not easily accomplished under traditional zoning, to give that, you know, we were talking about that setback, and, and that easement to give back to the city, that's really all not, you know, under traditional zoning, especially the existing R3 zoning, it's, it's very challenging. And so what the city saw, and what was the genesis of, you know, some of the pieces, but this piece of the redevelopment plan is to be able to have that public give back, as well as these sidewalk improvements, public maintenance, things like easements to the city, that's really better suited within a redevelopment agreement, within the zoning of a redevelopment plan, and really with that city oversight, that you just cannot get under traditional zoning. I'm sure this board has seen that before. So, the land use element, specifically, I want to get back to that rail transit. What page 27 of the master plan speaks to is about expanding those services, and expanding West Side Avenue with that new station. So, again, I've already talked about the Fayette setback, that's all envisioned, continues to be consistent with that, and also your redevelopment, I'm sorry, I keep changing those terms, master plan speaks to is about open space, and working closely with developers through the redevelopment area, and, again, the public, you know, it might not be that public park exactly, but it is a public space that isn't, not as prevalent in Journal Square as you would see in other neighborhoods. Your master plan, especially on page 179, it speaks to working closely to serving these areas, and that, you know, there might be a lack of this in Journal Square, so this is part of that project vision, and to, you know, do this through that thoughtful design. Again, you have a housing element, which has an inclusionary zoning ordinance, so this would be consistent with that, the new residential units would be, have that set aside, and, I'm sorry, I know I'm jumping around, so the open space element is actually where it speaks to, on page 34, it talks about the historic downtown, Communipaw having those higher concentration of public parks, whereas this neighborhood, as well as other neighborhoods like Green, Greenville, West Bergen, West Side, and the Heights, and the Five Corners, they tend to have less, so this is why this project has been thought out with planning, this mixed use. Everything I see points to consistency, yes.
My mic is off. We lost your, your feed.
You lost my feed?
Your feed onto the screen.
Oh, okay.
Could we bring that up, just so we can, you know, the public can follow along with what you're, you're presenting?
Yeah, you're going to have to log back in.
There was a lot of ones. It was just ones.
So, take it from, what's the consistency with the master plan?
So, from my professional planning review, I find this consistent with all of these points, the open space element, the housing element, as well as the land use element. I don't see anything that's inconsistent. It's my professional opinion that this is consistent with the master plan, and I'm happy to take questions, but.
May I ask some questions?
Sure. Counsel.
So, is the, is the plaza area, the Vacated West Side Avenue, is that a consistent element of, with the master plan?
Yes, I would say that's consistent with your open space element, as I stated before, where it talks about the concentration of parks and open space, and the lack of in the Journal Square, and that this can give that opportunity.
And the preservation of the specific buildings that are indicated in the redevelopment plan amendment, that is, the Urcalano Building and the residential building, is that consistent with the master plan?
Yep, I know the city has an April 2024 historic element, I would say that's consistent as well, it's to follow protocols, we've worked with HPC, and I would say that's consistent as well, yes.
The construction of, of a high-rise building, is that consistent with the master plan?
Yes, it speaks to the typologies.
And the inclusionary, inclusion of affordable housing in that, in that development, is that consistent?
Yes, we would follow any inclusionary zoning ordinance.
And I assume if it's true with respect to the vacated portion of West Side Avenue, it would also be true with respect to the give back of Corbin Avenue, is that correct?
Correct, and again, that's something, as I said, not easily accomplished under traditional zoning, and that's all outlined and memorialized in this redevelopment plan.
I, I have no other questions.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Ms. Spire, can you point us towards anywhere in the plan where it mentions what the inclusionary housing element is? Is there a number, is there a percentage?
I think it would be, you know what, let me look it up before I speak off cuff, but it tends to just cross-reference your, your zoning ordinance. So Chapter 187 is your municipal inclusionary zoning ordinance, and so it would, so while this plan supersedes, it does defer to your land development ordinance, either typically when it's silent on something, or in this case, it just cross-references.
But that's not a proposed change to the plan?
It's Section Five, it's in the plan as existing already, so there's an affordable housing requirement for everything in the plan.
Okay.
Everything that got amended is subject to 187.
Okay, understood.
Right.
The historic element on the, let's call it the Urcalino Building, it only goes back 15 feet on the north side, the north-facing facade?
Mm-hmm.
So that ghost sign on the roof, or I'm sorry, at the, the upper edge of the building, is that preserved, is that not preserved? Is that spelled out in the, the changes?
I'm just going to turn to that page, because that's a very technical question, that is probably very technically answered within the page. But as you saw, right now, it's illustrative renderings, and we'll respect and acknowledge what's in.
Sure.
The plan, and, you know, that probably will be designed out more by the architect. And I would imagine, under redevelopment agreements, that could be contemplated as well, for kind of that extra layer of security, if there's concerns. I don't know what page exactly is on.
Chairman, my answer on this one perhaps, if I can. The discussions with the historic preservation officer, Maggie O'Neill, involve the facade of the building, of both buildings. I don't think it involved retainage of signing, or specifically referred to signage on the building, it referred to basically the architectural look of the building.
Yes, so anything, so as you turn that corner from the. So anything, so as you turn that corner from the, the west-facing facade to the north-facing facade, you got me? So the front of Urcolino's is being, let's break it down. The front is being preserved.
Yeah.
The Urcolino's entrance is being preserved.
Yeah.
As you go around the side of the building, is anything being preserved on there?
No.
Okay.
Either side.
Okay.
And the back.
Because, I mean, I'm not the Historic Preservation Officer, I think that sign on the, the north-facing facade has a historical element.
I don't think that was ever mentioned, sir.
Okay.
I don't think it was ever brought up as being a historic characteristic
Sure.
required, required.
Okay, understood. Um, go ahead, Santa. Sorry to cut you off.
Counsel, perhaps we should just look at the amendments. There seem to be a significant amount of verbiage added for this Zone 3. And that's going to be the bulk requirements, and as I understand it, that's now being placed into the redevelopment plan.
Exactly. The only other change, Mr. O'Malley, with respect to the part of the property that is west of vacated West Side Avenue, west of vacated West Side Avenue, was one of the issues that planning wanted to get clarified, which is, there's a plaza being built, when is that plaza going to be built, and what does it look like? You know, kind of what are the dimensions? That had to be, and there's a bond requirement there for, to make sure that it is built, right? So that, that language was, was added in.
Okay.
And then we dealt with the, the east side of, of the vacated West Side Avenue.
But it sounds like we're literally now laying out the zoning for the site.
Yes.
So we've added the zoning
For the east side.
On the east side.
Of vacated West Side Avenue.
We've called it the Zone 3.
Zone 3 includes both.
But this is the west side of Zone 3 now.
Right, and it's divided into two sections. So the section, the first section, which is
But it did not exist and does not exist as we sit here today.
What doesn't exist?
East and west of Zone 3.
There, there is the, the west side of Zone 3.
Currently?
Currently exists and is under construction. That's the building that's under
Yes, that's the west.
And on the east side, on the other side of, of vacated West Side, that was, that was, that had, that was kind of left as, as subject to further discussion, and that's what this is.
Yes.
So that's my point.
Yes, yeah, you're right.
There's no zoning for this site under the redevelopment plan currently.
I think they just preserved, I think they just preserved the status quo for the zoning, and then this was
Fair, fair statement.
For the west side? Or for both?
No.
No, 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 just for the
The east side.
East side. East side of the West Side Ave Plaza.
So the east side continued with the same standards that were on the west side, without the benefit of knowing how the property was going to be developed. So we just left it the way it was
Right.
And said, okay, we may have to amend this when the project comes to fruition. So now we're putting those standards in place.
Exactly, much more specifically now.
Now we're specifically identifying the bulk standards, like we always do in zoning, and the testimony you heard is, what's being proposed in those bulk standards are consistent with the master plan because it satisfies this goal of the housing element of your master plan, this goal of the open space element of your master plan, if I'm understanding the testimony.
You understand it exactly correctly.
Well, the only, the follow-up to that is, in the, on Page 24, it says Zone 3, west of vacated West Side Avenue portion, and then it's the 1, 2, 3, 4, 4th line down, it says, "This redevelopment plan establishes the prior site plan approval as the permitted zoning for this portion of Lot 30.01, west of the vacated."
Yeah.
So that goes back to Eddie's point about prior site plan approval, and that, how that could
No, it's a little different.
Okay.
Though
Well, that confused me a little bit.
This is a confusing location. I mean, we're, we're trying to clarify two different pieces of property on two different sides of a vacated street, right? So the west side of vacated West Side Avenue, if you follow me, that's already been approved, and that's the zoning, right? And all this is saying is, that's been approved, and we're including it as it's been approved, prior approval. And then the east side, that's the new stuff.
Can I just say one more point?
So we're recognizing that approval, because that was, that was a zoning board approval at the time.
Right.
Exactly.
And I would say absent of this language, it's kind of a non-conforming building, and then what happens if you want to, you know, do a little micro-change?
Sure.
Back to the zoning board, redevelopment plans can't go that way. So it really is just, in a way, administratively making things less complicated.
Yes, so if, if that language isn't in there, that site plan isn't conforming with the redevelopment plan. So it's just adding that into the redevelopment plan after the fact. Any other questions?
I have, yeah, I have a quick question. Well, just a clarification, if you just mind. You mentioned the property in the master plan for the PATH station, that if it ever comes into fruition, which I bet everybody that's, lives there is praying and hoping that it happens one day. So with the amendments that are being proposed now, you made a statement that it's gonna make, hopefully, if it have, comes into fruition, this will make it easier than what the master plan already has for it.
Yeah, so the bulk standards, now I'll get a little technical with some of the bulk standards, it, the FIAIT setback is to envision for that and, you know, make that site plan realistic, so that it's zoned to kind of accommodate that, and then, you know, it's, it's not a redevelopment plan item, but with redevelopment plans, you have to have redevelopment agreements.
Right.
And that's legal and very technical, and that's where you get a lot of public benefit, and what makes it really a public-private partnership kind of lives in that document. And like I said, under traditional zoning, R3, like this project, that project, that type of benefits unlikely.
So basically, now the master plan, and that would still be a vision one day, hopefully, it could come true. Okay, I would just, I want to be clear on that. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
All right, thank you. That's it, counsel?
I've done it.
Okay. Tanya, do you want to give anything, or do you want to open up public first?
I'm, I'm happy to just give a little color to a very, I think, confusing application. I believe Chairman Langston, you were on the planning board approval for this first site, when
Absolutely.
A kind of at the, at the hearing, they decided to give the 30 feet to the train station right away.
Correct, yes.
This whole property is one site. Whoever owned Puccini's and had all those parties had a lot of political connection, because they were able to vacate both West Side Avenue and Corbin. So if you're looking at the parking lot, West Side Avenue, Urcolano's, Corbin Ave, and then the building next door, it's all one lot. And so it was first a planning board approval, it met all the R3 standards, and had the 30-foot setback. They went back to the drawing board, went to the zoning board to ask for a height deviation on the parking lot. So it was five stories and 12. The 12 stories is kind of what kicked it over, with additional density, also providing that 30-foot right-of-way. So that's why it's confusing with the east and the west. The West Side Avenue will become the public plaza, and that's why we kind of differentiate it between that way. I believe they're being condoed, is that?
I, I didn't want to get into that, but I can, I mean
I just, I just wanted to get a
It's not condominium units.
I don't want you to get into it, counsel.
It's not appropriate.
All right, I, I just wanted, so that approval is what's being held, the five-to-12-story approval. It also did include approval for Urcolano's building and the building next door. That is now kind of being separated out, and that's the west part, west portion. In the redevelopment, in our plan, we do take into consideration, if they wanted to continue that approval and do an amendment, we can kind of talk about that if you really want to. The big clause there is that zoning board approval didn't really have a way to make sure that the public plaza was given back to the city. So they can do a site plan amendment for the zoning board approval, which we call West Side, west of West Side, and now it will catch the developer's agreement for the public plaza, if they decide to never do this application. That's some of the coloring shading to that, yeah.
Okay.
And that's built into the first paragraph under the
Yeah, amended.
Correct.
The other thing though is, is further down, it says now that the height can go upward of 18 stories?
Does say that.
Yes. Great, it's R3, but the prior approval kept that building exactly as it was. It was just going to be readaptively used for retail, and the building next door, I believe, was seven units and not 100% sure. That building would be denied demolition today, which is a part of why we have it as the, is being preserved under this redevelopment plan. Both buildings, obviously.
So in my head, I mean, so there's Zone 3 in my head, municipal land use, and then there's what's before us, which seems to be differentiations on that, correct?
Just between the west side and the east side.
Okay, and the east side is the one that's looking to have it differentiated.
Yeah, and as, as a part of the upzoning for that, you, Corbin Avenue is being given back to the city, the buildings are being historically preserved, and of course, the affordable housing.
And may I
Sure.
add to this? And the Urcolano Building, which has, as I said, has the deli on the first floor, and then the three stores above it are just basically vacant, and the apartment building on the other side, that is part of historic preservation, that's vacant right now, that's uninhabitable. So the intent is to bring those into, back into a fruitful kind of use for the city.
I'd love to see Salome Urcolano remain historically.
Well, there's an answer to that, if you want me to answer
No, 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 that
I mean
That's just tongue-in-cheek.
That is, that is a serious consideration of, of the
But that's, but that's not what we're talking about.
And Chairman, I did the ultimate sin and texted the Historic Preservation Specialist on their maternity leave, and said if he wanted to move the ghost sign to the West Side Avenue front edge, to just, that she, she thinks it would be fine.
Okay. I, I mean, I think it's appropriate, I think it's
I just, I just wanted to make sure it wouldn't be not, inappropriate, inappropriate.
Inappropriate. I, I think that ghost sign is as historic as anything on that building, to be honest with you, so.
I, I just don't know how you historically move
Repaint it, you just repaint it.
That's all.
You repaint it. Yeah, it's not, yeah, there's, there's no real historic preservation, just kind of keeping that.
I know.
Yeah, yeah.
That's
We can look into it.
That was the wish, I have, no.
It's, you know, obviously, it has no bearing on the master plan consistency.
I understand.
It's a wish list.
This is an aesthetic judgment, right?
Yes, yes, so I'm, you know, it has no bearing on any of this.
I got it.
But if, you know, we're preserving this, we can preserve some of that, too.
That's like a great idea.
Okay. All right, so Tanya, if there's nothing else, I'll go to public?
Nope.
Okay. Anybody here from public that wants to comment on this? Anyone here from public? Please come on up.
Natalie Limone, N-A-T-A-L-I-E Limone, L-I-M as in monkey, O-N as in Nancy, 55 Wales. And I have just a short, some, some signatures that are related to what we've
So ma'am
what I'll be speaking about tonight.
You can speak to it, this board can't accept petitions.
Okay.
And we have three minutes for you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So, good evening, we are fresh off the heels of a well-attended community meeting about this issue last week, in which residents expressed a universal desire to stick to the original redevelopment plan that left this corner of Broadway and West Side dedicated to retail only, with no towers on top. One note to start, the plaza that has been referenced several times is already part of the development plan, and has already been planned with or without this amendment tonight, so we're still getting that public benefit. Regarding affordable housing and the inclusionary housing element, between the two side-by-side projects from the same developer, there would be about 837 units, but only this new dream tower, because, you know, it's not 100% yet, has affordable units, we were told maybe 34 to 36. So that's about 4% affordable housing amongst all of the units that this developer is building, that hardly honors the goals of creating mixed-income housing, like is stated in the inclusionary zoning ordinance. There's also not a varied scale of housing, as is also mentioned in these goals, where there are no townhomes, it's all towers and five-to-six-story brick buildings. One thing about this plan that upsets folks is the fact that it proposes to preserve just the facade and first eight feet of the historic factory building that houses Urcolano's, which is a legacy deli, but also the only banquet space in Marion, and to some extent, Journal Square. In the earliest talks with this developer about their envisioned projects on Broadway, residents were adamant that Urcolano's remained, and this was promised. And as a result of this and other good-faith promises, involved community members made numerous concessions and endorsements regarding different aspects of the first phase of this project that they would not have made otherwise. Now the neighborhood is being told that the promises will be honored, but not necessarily the way we all understood, because Urcolano's will likely have to move to another retail space in the other complex. Because if this amendment is approved, they will be demolishing all but the front of the building it is in. This is unequivocally not what the community understood when promised years ago that Urcolano's would quote "remain." The development plan, as currently approved, would allow for Urcolano's to remain in its entirety, and for the preservation of more of this historic cherished and actively-used building. This sort of bait-and-switch appears to be a trend with this developer, as there was a similar misunderstanding regarding a block of street trees that was removed for their existing project of West Side Square. And folks are also disgruntled that the original West Side Square plan had promised townhouses on Broadway that they felt blended in, and this was later changed. But most importantly for tonight, the developers have refused our request for a traffic study to look at implications on Corbin Avenue before proceeding with any new plans. Corbin Avenue is already significantly burdened with traffic because of the sick temple back there and the Urcolano's parking. The street dead-ends by the railroad tracks, so there's only one way in out for all cars going to the deli and the temple. Any proposed project, including this one rendered, would likely have some built-in parking that would also enter and exit on Corbin, given West Side Avenue is a pedestrian plaza. The developers have told us they're not required to do a traffic study at this stage, but residents don't feel any amendment should be made to the redevelopment plan that would affect an already overburdened street like this one without a traffic study first. I collected about 25 signatures about that on this petition. A final concern of the community is the height of the towers that is proposed, again, 19 stories. Were an amendment to be approved, numerous people suggested that the towers at least be consistent with the height of the other one, which is only 12 or 13. And I can't believe I got through all that in three minutes. Please consider the community in leaving well enough alone and denying this petition, at the very least until some of the community requests are honored.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Good evening.
I do. Michael Manzo, M-A-N-Z-O, 82 Wright Avenue, this lifelong Jersey City resident.
Mike, good evening, we have three minutes for you.
Good evening. I'll try and talk fast, but it, it seems that where we're going with this is a little different than where we should be at. First of all, I want to clarify, this is the Marion section, this is not Journal Square, and anybody who wants it to be that way should just go to Journal Square. This is Marion section. When we came, when the developer came to Marion with the project that's being built now, and I'll refer to it as the square, it's west of West Side Avenue, there were certain amenities that should have been realized that were promised us. Porches to indicate the facade, like from Tunley Avenue going west to Wallace across the street. Maintain the height in the front, three and four stories, not to see the big towers in the back, to blend in to what the forefathers of our community had a vision for, one, two, and three family homes. There were some big ones here and there, but they agreed to that. Little porches, trees, mature trees that were good for the environment. All of this was agreed to. The plaza that we have now was an agreement to offset the extra stories and making two towers instead of one tower. All of these things, they're throwing in now like they're giving us something. There's nothing to be given, it was already spent on the last favor the community gave them. Still to this day, I'm requesting that the flag on top of their crane be changed from the Canadian flag to the American flag. I think it's an insult that they don't respect the country that this project is being built We started with the community to try and get their input. Two other developers came, we had mutual agreements, we got into, this can help us, this can help us. Everybody was mature, and we got to an agreement. They refused to come back, once we told them the traffic They refused to come back, once we told them the traffic on Corbin Avenue does not work now, it can't work after they put all of these units, and that's without the square, even in its fruition right now, we can't get on Broadway to go west to get to four-forty or Route Seven, we can't get out of the side streets to get onto Broadway to go westerly. This has to be resolved before anything gets built. Not to mention the infrastructure, we can have swimming pools in the back there, they have to shower every other day, they can't shower every day because the infrastructure can't take the drain water. To build a water detention tank under the public right of it is still a mystery to me how this was even approved. The public has to benefit from what they do? I, I don't see that, I only see the developers being the beneficiaries of whatever they want to do, where they want our neighborhood to go, not where the neighbors want the neighborhood I hope that everyone realizes that the community that was there, that kept Jersey City floating, bared the brunt of when things were bad, and we, we made a good foundation, I hope that this application is denied to a future point where they come back, have a reasonable mutual agreement with the community, and therefore, we all move forward to a better Jersey City. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else, please, come on up.
Sure, Joseph Capazoli, C A P O, two Z's like zebra, O L I, twelve Bryant Avenue.
Mr. Capazoli, good evening, we have three minutes for you.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity. I just, I'll make it quick, I certainly agree with the sentiments of both previous speakers, members of the community. I also want to thank you for yourself stating that this is very confusing, because I will say it's confusing to me, too. I came tonight actually thinking I was going to speak about a particular project that was presented to us last week, and now I understand we're really not here for that tonight, but I just want to say quickly that when this, I'll call it Phase One, when they came to the community to propose the project that's being built right now, I guess on the, we're calling the Westside of Westside Avenue, there were certain promises and assurances that were provided to the community about things that we asked for. Because of that, we did, we didn't want towers to be as tall as they are now, but we agreed to that, because we felt that they'd be in good faith, give us what we asked for. One of the main things we asked for, and stressed, was the preservation of Urcolanos at the end of Westside Avenue, to keep it as is. Originally, that was part of their, their Phase One plan, they were going to do retail on the Puccini Restaurant as it is now, and that building was not going to be hindered in any way, it was going to be remain as it was. This is actually now changing that, and they're looking to build higher on that prop, on the Puccini Restaurant, knock it down and build a tower, as they say, and it also now puts that Urcolanos restaurant in jeopardy. They have to move, because that, that building will not remain as it was, which originally we were told it would, so that's my only comment for tonight. I hope that going forward, if this is approved, I particularly think it should be, it shouldn't be, but if it is, that at least we can go back to the table with the developer and someone, and hopefully they'll listen to the community and provide us with the original promises that they did, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir, we appreciate it. Anybody else from public, please, come on up.
Mina Abadir, M I N A, Abadir, A B A D I R, six oh five Pavonia Avenue for, with my mother for the, she lives, she now lives in a renting, one of the high rises.
Good evening, sir, we have three minutes for you.
Yes, sir, basically, I have a couple of rhetorical questions, but also concerns from several, I watched several of the planning board meetings, and my mother actually was sold, we sold her house, one of the high-rise, another high-rise building coming, and then I put her in a renting community, rental, one of the high-rises. I began to realize that, I guess she's immobile, so I, I walk her through Jersey City, now I see a lot of these high-rises coming in all this, these areas, I think Jersey City should have a demographic, just like you're doing a study, now it's becoming a transient society, there's no elderly, there's no commuters, mostly the commuters are coming are the transient, nobody really living in Jersey City. I mean, I could say that, but you could do the study to verify this, but that's, that's one of the major issues. Another thing is, in terms of the planning board approval things previously, and promises from these high, you know, high-rise developers, why are there changes now, and if there's changes coming aboard, there should be more news, news traffic studies occurring, new planning in terms of how, how the actual community is being affected by this. So I don't see this, I see this kind of railroaded, bait-and-switched by some of these developers and the planning board, and my own personal venue, you know, opinion is, it's, you know, giving access to them, but not to the public community. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, sir, we appreciate your comments.
Good evening. I do. Charlene Burke, C H A R L E N E B U R K E, fifty-six Duncan Avenue.
Ms. Burke, good evening, we have three minutes for you.
Good evening. I'm here as the president of the Westside Community Alliance in support of the Marion Section neighborhood, that I went to that meeting last week as well, and the project was basically portrayed to the community, so it's very confusing when you see these large towers and the development that you had seen, even the images tonight, and yet people don't understand exactly bulk standards, I mean, really, that's how it should have been more portrayed, and I don't understand why we're going from, okay, the variances were confirmed for the west side of Westside, and now we're going to now incorporate them into the redevelopment plan, but yet this site will be allowed to eighteen or nineteen stories. I'm not really clear as to why that's higher, why not equal to what the variances were approved. To me, that would be Zone Three unified, and for this area, the master plan was referred to many times, but where is about the integration into the surrounding neighborhood? That was all throughout the master plan process, what neighborhoods were clamoring about, that much of this new development is not being integrated into the surrounding neighborhood, and when it's a low-rise neighborhood, where's the step up? Why do we go from three stories to nineteen stories? And aren't there buffer zones that are stepping up into these higher elevations? And as some of the previous speakers, this is in Journal Square, where high-rise is an expectation, anywhere in Journal Square now, this is one of the surrounding neighborhoods, the lower neighborhoods, and when they talk about traffic, Broadway is a nightmare, it's like four-forty on steroids, and why this board doesn't even require, or the planning department, a traffic study that speaks about how it's going to circulate in this area, given that it's only one, one lane going towards Route four-forty, is just ridiculous. That should have been a requirement before this even went forward, and those, plus the last thing I want to mention, your zoning board agenda, it doesn't even have the proper link to this redevelopment plan, it's to the artists that you're going to be approving later. Why, and I called Cameron Black and told him that link was incorrect, and that was a week ago, and yet it still remains incorrect. So if people want to find information about a redevelopment plan, how can they do it? Easily, they have to call in order to have it sent to them. To me, that should be a requirement, that if that's not proper, then this is what's emailed out to everybody, as well as hung on all of the city, city, city hall's wall, so proper information, notice to the public was not done. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Anybody else from public? Anyone else from public?
Chair, see no more, see no more, there is no one, I would wish to close.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, public is closed. Tanya, we had your comments before, do you have anything else you want to add?
Nope, other than I just wanted to make sure it's clear in this redevelopment plan that the dedication of Corbin and the dedication of the public plaza, along with all of the specifications of its being public and maintenance, is prior to the CO for the east property, not the west. I think the idea is to use west in part of construction phasing.
So I would like Santo to just go over the redevelopment process, as far as how this comes to the board, what the board's responsibility is, it's ultimately city council's decision, we're just giving them a recommendation, but I'd rather have Santo do it from, keep it all legal, legal.
Right.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Chairman. As the board knows, and for those members of the public that are here, so the redevelopment process is a little different than what you see us normally doing. Every other Tuesday, please come on out, we're here, eight hours every other Tuesday. In the redevelopment process, there is a chance that something like this can happen where there's a redevelopment plan. So first, there's a study that's done, that study is presented to this board, and this board is looking at certain criteria to determine if the area that's being studied is in need of redevelopment, if it is found by this board to qualify, this board makes the recommendation back to the council, that the council take action. This board cannot take action, we make recommendations to the council, the council takes action through the adoption of either ordinances or resolutions, and that's how the different parts of redevelopment happen. We're at the stage where the study has already been done, a redevelopment plan has already been done, now we're going to consider making changes to that plan that would allow for various development to go forward. Well, you've heard what those changes are, and the question that this board has to determine is, are the changes proposed consistent with the master plan? That's the only thing that the board at this stage in the proceeding is concerning itself with. Yes, it's consistent, no, it's not consistent, and whether or not we make the recommendation to the council that they go ahead and consider the redevelopment plan amendments because they are or are not consistent with the master plan of the city. With respect to the master plan, you've heard people talk about, you know, on page one-hundred-and-ninety-seven, this board sat through the master plan, most of you were on this board, and went through hearing upon hearings, studies, and the master plan is over two-hundred-and-fifty pages the last time I counted it. I had to break it down into multiple exhibits in order to submit it to the court, I actually gave the court a colored copy so that all of the judges in the Hudson County Courthouse have their own colored copy of the Jersey City master plan, because it is something that they need, and they don't like to look it up through links, they want to touch the paper. So we have given that to all of them, so they can readily look at it, we reference various sections, but again, the question is, is the amendment consistent or inconsistent with that document, which is very voluminous? So Chairman, Board, again, I understand all of the comments, I understand all of the concerns, I know all of you do, but the only thing that guides you at this junction is whether or not what's being proposed is or is not consistent with the master plan, that's going to go over to the council. What the council chooses to do, the council chooses to do, it is just our recommendation with respect to consistency with the master plan. And Chairman, as always, if anybody has questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you, Council.
But with that being said, Council, isn't that the understanding or the mindset that bore the initial redevelopment plan? That it be consistent with the master plan? And that, I mean, anytime it comes before this board or the city council, it's going to be up for interpretation at that particular point in time?
Yes, whenever we're amending redevelopment plans, the question is always consistency with the master plan. That's why we have people, professionals, give opinions and back up those opinions through their review of the documents as to whether or not they find it consistent, so that the board can actually weigh those testimonies and that evidence, and help guide the board in determining it is or is not consistent. And then the council obviously will, will consider that and how they move forward.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two zero two four dash zero one seven eight, as presented to the board with staff, planning staff recommendation, and sent to the city council for approval.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion and a second for a favorable recommendation to city council. Acting Vice Chair, Gangadin.
Yeah, I would just want to say, based upon the recommendation, I think it's consistent with the master plan, I vote as I.
Commissioner Torres.
I want to thank the public for coming out, and I thank council for the clarifications all the time, too, to clear things up, because I, like I stated in the beginning of this, when they were showing us what they plan to do in the future, things get confusing. And so with that said, this battle's not over, right? Because we're going to vote on, I'm going to vote on what's consistent with the master plan, right? That's what I'm looking at. What they plan to do, whether the deli and the historic site, those are different departments, those are different elements of what's in the future, people could talk to their council people, whether the business stays in business or not, I don't know, that has nothing to do right now with what I am here and asked to look at. And that's how I took the council's clarification of this. I was on this board when, two thousand and nineteen, when they looked at it the last, the first time they came to us, and I find that right now, what they're asking and what they're willing to give us with the street and the park, and hopefully, the dream of having a pass station there, is consistent with the master plan, so with that, I thank the public for coming out, but I'm going to vote aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
I vote no.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Yeah, so, you know, the master plan, I was on the board when it was approved, read through the documents, and that's great, I mean, master plans are master plans. In this particular area, you've got a school across the street, PS twenty-three, you've got a church down the block, we've heard some of the concerns of the traffic, so, you know, and then when I hear about Salamuriya Ecolano, I mean, so on September eleventh, two thousand and one, I had gone down to Liberty State Park and was down there when Pasquale and Natali were giving food to all those people coming from throughout the country, when we went over to the pile, and I'm on the World Trade Health Program, I got a Purple Heart, the whole bit. There's, there's more to redevelopment than just brick and mortar, it's heart and soul. I mean, this town, when you hear the people who came up, who've been in that neighborhood for, you know, Mike's parents have been there for countless years, and I think that plans are to serve people and communities, and I, and I don't know that this, I mean, it just sounds like a big disconnect between what Gene Polino says is meeting with the community, and then the community coming up here with petitions and people who are valued and trusted and long-term members, lifelong members of that community. So without belaboring this, I vote no.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
So I, I don't disagree with any opinion up here tonight, I, I think there's some inconsistencies that still need to get ironed out, but as far as the bottom line is, is my vote is based on consistency with the master plan, and that's here. I think a lot of the issues that we've heard tonight. I think a lot of the issues that we've heard tonight can be brought up in front of city council, should be brought up in front of city council, and that's where those changes can happen. This board has no power to make those changes. So, my vote is aye. Again, my recommendation that I think, you know, maybe we should have a little more historic aspect on New Yorkolino's building saved, but again, consistency with the master plan is there, my vote is aye. Thank you.
Motion carries, four in favor, two oppose, two favorably recommend to city council.
Okay, thank you, everybody. We're going to take a ten-minute break real quick.
He's only going to go up here, I think.
Yeah.
I miss last words.
Hey, how are you?
And we'll get to new business. Item nine is the review and discussion of certified artists Jonathan Fonseca, Shui Yang, Aman Cooper Williams Abdul, and Bruce Baffa.
Good evening, Board. So, these artists have been deemed eligible as certified artists to receive the artist housing we have in Jersey City, certified by the A C B, the Artist Certification Board, and they've met criterias one, two, three, four, and five, and planning staff just recommends that the board approve these artists so that they can enter into the lottery to receive the artist housing.
Okay, thanks, Cam. Any questions, anyone?
No.
Okay, is there anybody here from the public that wants to comment? Anyone from public?
Chair, see no one from public, I would like to close the public portion.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. We have Cam's recommendation, so I'll entertain a motion.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion, a favorable motion to approve the various certified artists reflected in the agenda for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. Acting Vice Chair, Gangadhan.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries, all in favor. All right, thank you. Let's move on to item ten, is case P two zero two four dash zero zero three five, is a preliminary and final major site plan with C variances for one thirty-five Garfield Ave.
Good evening, Stephen Joseph Casano Quigley Chirami for the applicant. This is a notice application, I do have certified notices here.
Chairman, I receive the affidavit and notice proof publication for one thirty-five Garfield Avenue. This had been previously scheduled and carried through tonight with preservation of that notice. I have had the opportunity to review it. What has been handed to me appears to be the original of the uploaded version, we're going to mark it as A one for purposes of the record.
Okay, thank you, Council.
Great, thank you. All right, one thirty-five Garfield Avenue, this is located on the corner of Garfield Ave and Gates Ave in the R one zone. The applicant's proposing a new three-story multifamily building, sixteen dwelling units, ground floor parking. In order to accomplish this, the applicant is requesting preliminary and final major site plan approval with C variances for minimum front yard setback, maximum lot coverage, maximum curb cut width. What you'll see is all these variances are necessary to accommodate the parking, which is not required because of the affordable housing being provided, but it was something that was strongly requested by the community that we met with. We went back and forth on the different versions of, of the parking, the parking count multiple times. We've, have a few review letters that we'll talk about after a direct testimony as well, but we do have two experts this evening. We have our architect, we have our planner, we're going to have Ahmed get sworn in, and we'll jump right into it.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Ahmed Emara, E M A R A.
Mr. Mark, good evening, always a pleasure. Your license is current tonight?
It is.
Okay, thank you, you're qualified.
Thank you.
And do we have to mark your presentation?
You do, yes.
Do we do?
Your mark is A two, how many, how many slides?
It is twenty.
And Council will submit that after the hearing, please?
Yes.
Okay, so A two is the one thirty-five Garfield Ave, Jersey City, New Jersey, planning presentation dated of today's date, May twenty-seventh. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, go ahead.
I'll be brief, I understand the scheduling. This is one thirty-five Garfield, it is on the corner of Gates and Garfield, as Steve mentioned. This is a slide showing the aerial view and the massing in the area, we have a school across the street. There's also two taller buildings along Garfield Avenue right here. It is in the R one zone, if I zoom in, it is the corner right there, which is seventy-five point one-two by hundreds, which is about seventy-five thousand, seventy-five hundred square feet. This would be the basic zoning, which is the R one. You would have seventy-five and a minimum lot of twenty-five by a hundred, you could have three, two families. The density is forty-two units per acre, and a minimum, an additional one parking space you could provide. This is what's being provided on, using the A H O, unlimited density, and eliminates the parking requirement. While that's the, this is the proposal right here for the corner, while that's the case, we are providing twelve parking spaces. We've had the pleasure of meeting with the neighborhood, discussed the project with them, and the feedback we've got is parking is something that is needed and wanted in the neighborhood, so we are providing parking. There's twelve parking spaces that are accessed off of a curb cut that's currently existing, and we're keeping the existing curb cut, we've actually, we're actually making it slightly smaller. It's on Gates Avenue, where my arrow is right now, and inside that parking, partially covered and partially exposed, is twelve parking spaces along with the nine bicycle parking that's required.
And Ahmed, sorry to interrupt, we did get some review letters from traffic engineering, and they did request removal of, of one of those parking spaces.
Yes, yes. Parking space number one, which I'll show in a second. We are requesting three variances, all three of them are relating in one way or another to the parking. One is about coverage, and the second is the curb cut width, which ten is required, sixteen is proposed, twenty-three is what's existing, and as well as the, the, the front setback. This is the Gates Avenue view, this is the garage entrance, so the parking is completely masked from the, from Gates Avenue, it's not visible, and it's all behind the building. This is the layout of the building on the ground floor, the parking is on the right side here. You come in, and this is the spaces. This is specifically the space that the attorney just mentioned, Stephen just talking about this as the traffic report, they requested for us to move parking space number one, which is something that we're willing to comply with, since parking, again, isn't a requirement, it's something that we, we wanted to provide in the project.
Move or eliminate?
Eliminate.
They wanted to eliminate, correct, yes.
So, you're going to have eleven spaces, not twelve?
We will have eleven spaces, not twelve.
Okay, so let's say that.
This is the second floor and the third floor, this is a, the three-bedroom, which is an affordable unit that's being provided. I should mention that there is ten percent affordable requirement that comes with the A H O, utilization of the A H O. The ten percent in this case are two units, and we have a two-bedroom and a three-bedroom, and this is the three-bedroom that's being provided right here. The roof deck, the roof of the building has a green roof area as well as the mechanical area, there is no roof deck open to the public or to any private units. This is a view of the entrance of the building along Gates, and this is the building setback on the ground floor here along Garfield, and this is a night shot of the building. I do want to mention one other thing on the floor plans, which is, because this came up in the neighborhood meeting, there was a concern about noise, and we did explain that on the inside here, the, the units that are facing the rear of the building, these units don't have anything facing the rear, they're facing the street here, and then the units here that would be facing the rear are set back significantly from this neighbor by about thirty-seven feet, and then in this direction, there is a, there is a three-foot setback from the building, and then all the windows are facing in that direction. Not to mention that the assembly of the building will be in accordance with the building code, so any sound classification will be met. Stephen, maybe anything else?
I, I would just want to ask you to confirm that we do satisfy the E V statute.
We do satisfy the E V statute, yes. This, this project will comply with the state's requirements for E V.
Are the, the chargers are internal to the building, or are they in the outside?
They're, the parking is partially under the building and partially outside the building, but everything is, is, is at, like, nothing is actually enclosed.
Okay.
It's all open, and the chargers will be open.
Okay, but they're in the internal portion underneath the structure, or they're?
No, they're in the area outside.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, that's your presentation?
Pretty brief. Any questions?
If you could, just bring us up to the rooftop, I just want to see, there's no mechanical equipment on the roof?
There is, there is mechanical equipment on the roof.
Okay, can you show us screening?
Yes, with this area here, we'll have a four-foot screening fence.
Okay, very good. Anybody else, any questions?
Do you be demoing?
Yes, the existing building, correct.
Three, or just one existing?
It's just one existing building right now.
The way it is, it looks like it's two buildings.
Right now, yes, and there's a garage in the, in the same location, the same cut, which is, like I said, the existing is twenty-three feet, seven inches.
It makes it look like it's.
It does, it looks like a, a bigger building than what it is right now.
On the Garfield Avenue, if I'm on Garfield Avenue looking towards the building, you have a space there with the, the other existing building, that's about, what's the width of that space now that's going to be? It's going to be about five feet or three feet?
It's, it's, right now, it's about three feet, it's going to stay the same way.
Yeah, it stays the same way, okay.
And I should mention, actually, one thing that I, in the site plan, as it, at the bill, as the construction stands right now, there are no trees, and we are providing six trees. So, the current condition, no trees around the, around the corner.
And you are going to supply trees?
We're, we're, yes, six trees right now, and, and, and you should mention this area here, this area that has dotted space, and that area as well are both depressed curbs, this is something that came up from the planning staff and, and the review process, and we did depress these areas to collect rainwater in case of storm, storm during the, like, from the streets, actually, not from the building itself.
So, the entrance into the garage is facing the school?
The entrance.
Which basically, it's about maybe a hundred feet from the entrance of the school, too, maybe, or fifty feet from the entrance of the school.
Yes, yes.
Um, well, you consider some type of alarm when the cars are coming out, or is it?
Absolutely, yes, yes.
Is it, it's not, to indicate that a car is going to be accident?
Yeah, it's, it's only eleven cars, but yes, we can do a pedestrian alarm system that when the door opens, it goes off, so people are going to alarm that something is coming out.
You have the children running there, you know?
Absolutely, yeah.
Give them an idea, okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, anybody else? All right, thank you.
All right, we're going to bring Charles Hight up to do some planning testimony.
Yes, Charles Hight, last name spelled H E Y D T.
Mr. Hight, good evening, your license is current tonight?
Still current.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Good evening, Board members, I just want to reiterate a few pieces of, of the presentation tonight. So, we are in the R one, this application is implementing the affordable housing overlay district, so we are able to generate a mixed, a multifamily development where we're proposing sixteen units, but the part of the overlay, affordable housing overlay is the requirement of two affordable units, so we are realizing two affordable units with this project. We do have three variances that we're requesting. With respect to the maximum lot coverage variance, what's permitted is eighty-five percent, what's being requested is ninety-five point seven. So, just to reiterate a few of the design aspects that go inside with the, the notion of, of a good civic and urban design. With respect to stormwater mitigation, we do have a onsite detention system, we are also proposing one thousand square feet of green roof, you saw that on the prior slide. We are integrating the six street trees and bioswales, connecting two of them, or actually three of them, and there is at-grade landscaping that's being reintroduced along the front, along Garfield and the side yards. So, that does offset some of the additional coverage that's being proposed, and the additional coverage is necessary to accommodate the rear yard parking. With respect to the curb cut, I think it was covered pretty straightforward, there's existing twenty-three feet there today, we're actually decreasing that to sixteen feet, that still exceeds the permitted, but given that the location of the curb cut, where other utilities are, where the street trees are, just made it sense to, to settle at sixteen. We are introducing the warning system, and again, this is for eleven vehicles, mostly residential, they typically all don't leave at the same exact time, mostly residential leave in the morning, come back in the late afternoon, but they're spread out across, across a, a set of hour, hour, two-hour time. With respect to the front yard setback, I did just want to reiterate one point, we are requesting zero feet setback along Garfield and Gates. What's required along Garfield is, is fourteen feet, Gates is a little less than that, but with respect to the design, we're dealing with a corner property. With the R one standards, we have a rear corner point that's measured for a rear yard setback on the interior corner of the property. So, while we don't, while we don't have the necessary front yard setback, we're benefiting the interior of the property with greater rear yard setback. So, just to reiterate those dimensions, the distance from Gates is required to be twenty-five feet, where thirty-seven feet's proposed, and again, that dimension with respect to the rear yard requirement along Garfield is eighteen feet, where forty-two point seven feet's proposed. So, there's substantial rear yard setback that's being provided, in my opinion, I think the screen just went off, but that's a benefit, that's balancing the overall intent and design of the project. And one other thing to just reiterate is that this is at the intersection of Gates and Garfield where there are three other structures that are relatively unique, not necessarily the true R one standard. One is a school, it's a relatively large institutional structure, one is a mixed-use building with ground floor retail, zero front yard setback. The existing structure today is a mixed-use structure with less than required, or, yeah, less than required front yard setback. The fourth is really an industrial retail furniture store, it's, it's kind of more of an industrial massing, again, with a zero front yard setback. So, we're just kind of completing the intersection, the, the fourth intersection with the design, and that's a, a good design approach for the project. With respect to special reasons that the board could advance this application, I do think we're furthering purposes, A, for guiding appropriate developments in, in the state of New Jersey, implementing the affordable housing, generating the two affordable units. Uh, implementing the affordable housing, generating the two affordable units, in my opinion, is, is meeting that, uh, guidance. Purpose C, to provide for appropriate light air and open space. Again, I, I'll refer back to that, balancing the building mass, bringing it closer to the, to the public right-of-way and creating more light and air inter, internal to the bill, internal to the lot. Purpose E, to provide for appropriate population densities. Again, we're implementing the affordable housing overlay, which removes the density restriction and allows for, um, for multifamily uses. And then purpose I, to create for a good civic design, introducing the street trees, increased landscape, the sidewalk improvements. So overall, uh, the application does advance those special reasons. Um, with respect to the negative criteria, um, I don't believe there's any, uh, substantial detriment to the public welfare. Uh, Mr., Mr. Torres brought up a very good point. There will be kids likely walking along these streets, being near, um, the, the middle school. Uh, having a safe, safety detection system for, for pedestrians is appropriate. We also are, uh, balancing light and air with, uh, the overall massing of the building. Um, we did do a shadow study and that interior space is beneficial to, uh, to the overall property and reducing the impacts of shadows on adjacent properties. Um, with respect to any impairment to the zone plan or master plan, uh, again, the R1 is, uh, the intent of it is to allow for compatible infill residential development and allow for the, uh, maintenance of a residential community. This is a multifamily structure. It's going to be residential use, so that's very consistent with the R1. Uh, and in my opinion, it is a compatible infill development. With that, I think I've addressed my direct testimony and be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Height. Um, there's no parking maximum here, correct?
Not with the affordable housing.
Okay.
Component, no.
Okay, understood. Uh, anybody, any questions? All right, thank you.
So just a, a couple of cleanup items that I, I want to address. So, uh, like I said, there are a few review letters on the portal. One is a, uh, parking traffic memorandum from November 2024. Um, there were some comments in there. We submitted revised plans in hopes of addressing those comments. Traffic was still not satisfied, still recommended removal of the one parking space. We did submit subsequent plans. We were hoping to have more comments back tonight. But rather than delay the hearing, we've just agreed to eliminate that parking space and address the other comments on there. There's an MUA letter from November 2024, no issue addressing any of those comments. There's also a sewage, uh, comment letter that was on there. I don't think I've ever seen before, but it's basically requiring us to replace a sewer line. All those comments are acceptable. Uh, I, I think there is a small typo in the staff report that Cameron will address in staff comments. Uh, but that concludes our direct testimony.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Uh, is there anybody here from public that wants to comment on this application? Please come on up, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Gail Waltz, G-A-I-L-W-A-L-T-Z, 6 Bryant Avenue.
Good evening, Ms. Waltz, we have three minutes for you.
My family's property is right next door, 81 Gates Avenue. Our concern is that the parking area is right underneath my sister-in-law's windows and my tenant's windows. And I'm afraid, we're trying to not have a problem in the future. We would like a better fencing put up so to stop the emissions of the cars hitting the windows. We really like the project. We are supporting it. They had said that initially, they said that there was going to be a rooftop party area. Then they said it wasn't. Now today, they said it was for one tenant. So I don't know what the story is. Is it if, just for the one tenant? Is it not for the tenants or? I, we would like clarification on that. And also, we would like to know who is going to maintain this property in the future, in case we have any problems. And if they could possibly put a sign in there where the parking area is that says, "No working on cars and no loud music," that would be awesome.
It's reasonable.
We're really happy that it's only three stories. Thank you. I really don't like the Puccini property, but I didn't talk because everybody else did so eloquently. But yeah, we would like this project to go forward, but we do have reservations.
Understood. Thank you, we appreciate it. Counsel, um, I think those are more than reasonable. I, I'm.
Yeah, no, um, I, I did speak with John, I believe, uh, Gail's husband this morning. Um, I did forget to mention about the sign. I, I did tell John that we would agree to put the sign.
Okay.
In the parking area 100%.
Sure.
Um, with regard to the, to the fence, um, we did a, a board-on-board fence. I think the concern is the, the gaps in between the boards because they're offset. We're happy to do just a classic stockade fence where there's no gap. Um, but we've engaged with, with Gail and John and, um, the neighbors extensively on, on this project. Um, they're also connected with the, with the owners of, of the property. They have their, their phone numbers and are connected with them.
I remember it correctly, that is a six-foot fence too, right?
Correct.
That you're putting back there, six foot high, board-on-board.
Yep, that's correct. And, and the, that's the fence that typically is recommended by the city. But we're happy to do the, just the.
Okay.
The classic six-foot stockade, if that's.
Cam, any objection to that?
I, in this case, it's acceptable.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, counsel. And as far as maintenance goes, there's a, there's staff on hand, somebody?
There will be.
Maintenance contractor or something, yeah.
The intent is, it's a rental property, so it will be, uh. Oh, and there's no roof deck for private, for one unit or multiple units. There's no, no roof deck on the building.
Roof deck at all. Okay.
Just a green roof.
Just a green roof, that's correct.
So no access by anybody from the building?
Uh, just for maintenance.
Okay, gotcha. All right, thank you, counsel. Anybody else from the public? If you'd like to comment, please come on up.
Chair, see no one from the public, I would like to close the public portion.
Second.
All right, motion is made and seconded, public is closed. Cam, anything you want to add?
Okay, um, planning staff is satisfied with the professional planning testimony given by Mr. Height. He testified as to the master plan reconciliation. He, um, addressed how this meets the objectives and goals of the AHL and the R1. Um, and how the variances, um, can be approved without having any detriment to the public good and the community benefits of the deviation would substantially outweigh any detriment. Um, this project's very interesting because, um, this board likely remembers AHL projects of similar, um, density and bulk, um, with no parking. And this applicant has decided to put in the parking, um, which is a more expensive process here. And it was at the community's request that they've done this. So, um, planning staff believes that this meets the design criteria for the zone and it has, um, met many of the concerns of the community. Um, planning staff only would like to add that, um, we have a ninth, 10th, and 11th condition, um, of approval. Um, the ninth being that the garage will have an alarm to notify pedestrians as cars, cars exit and enter. Um, a 10th to add a sign in the parking garage area as specified by, um, the resident. And the 11th, which is a fence with no gap, um, to block the car headlights. So, um, we can get that literature more, um, lawyer-y.
Sure, I, I can, I think I could do that. Uh, those conditions are acceptable.
Okay, all right, thank you, counsel.
And planning staff recommends approval.
All right, thank you, Cam.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P202-0035 as presented to the board together with all the other additional conditions as discussed.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval.
Acting Vice Chair Gangadin.
I want to say it's a very nice project. I like it. Um, I felt that the variances are very minimal and not detrimental. Work with the community, it's very important. Um, my vote is aye.
Commissioner Torres?
I, uh, I double-checked, made sure I wasn't in that 200 radius so I could listen to this project. Um, I do live in the neighborhood and, um, well, I got a bunch of good neighbors, you know? I didn't realize that they were able to get 11 parking spaces. That is awesome. Um, we seen another project down the street and there is one, well, five blocks away that did pro, provide parking too. So we got one that provided parking north, one in the middle decided not to do it. And now this one going south of our Garfield has gave us parking spaces and it's definitely needed. Um, it's, uh, well, great community. I'm, I'm, I'm glad for that. And, um, so with that, I'm gonna vote a big aye for this project. Thank you.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky?
So it's kind of ironic that Ms. Waltz would come up here, who lives in the Marion, not Journal Square section of, uh, Jersey City, and sit there and, uh, have to suffer through the last application. But, uh, this application seems to not only, um, benefit the neighborhood, but her, um, relative and her tenant, so I vote aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
And Chairman Langston?
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor with conditions.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. All right, let's call item 11. This case P202-0093 is a minor subdivision for 42 to 46 Van Nostrand Ave. here in the city. Good evening, counsel.
Good evening, everyone. Michael Higgins of Castano Quigley Chirami, uh, on behalf of the applicant. I do have the original notices, if I may approach.
Chairman, I see the affidavit and proof of publication with respect to 42-46 Van Nostrand Ave. here in the city. This matter was previously scheduled and carried through to tonight's meeting with preservation of notice. Had the opportunity to review it, it does appear to be in order. We're gonna mark it as A1 for purpose of the record.
All right, thank you, counsel.
Thank you. So this is 42-46 Van Nostrand, it's in the R1 zone. It's an oversized lot i- in block 25901, Lot 44. It's, uh, 8,104 square feet. Um, the proposal this evening is to subdivide the existing lot into two new lots. Uh, Lot 44.01 will be 2,698 square feet. And then Lot 44.02, uh, will be 5,406 square feet. Uh, so those are both a little bit larger than a typical 2,500 square foot, uh, lot in the R1 zone. Um, there is an existing building with historic features on the lot. That will be on Lot 44.02 and that building will be preserved. Uh, and there are no variances at all as, as part of this application. So, um, with that, I do have a, uh, surveyor here if the board would like to hear testimony. Um, but I'd leave that up to the board's discretion.
I don't know if we need it. Does anybody want to hear survey testimony? I think it's very straightforward. Eddie? Yeah. Okay, no, I think we're fine.
Okay.
I know, right? Um, all right, is anybody here from public that wants to comment on this application, on a subdivision?
Chair, see no one from the public, I would like to close the public portion.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for, uh, public is, uh, motion is made and seconded, public is closed. Um, Sophia, do you have anything you want to add? Any problems, comments?
It is a relatively simple subdivision and there are no variances. I did want to put on record though that, um, with the subdivision, it, the existing building does have windows on the side that will fall on the lot line. And there is an easement that is also proposed to make sure that the new building, well, to make sure that there is access to maintain the existing building. And there's also an intent that the proposed new building, whatever that may be, will be three foot, one inch away from any existing windows of the, uh, yeah, of the existing building. So there's no conflict in case anyone was interested with that. So, planning would ask that, um, the attorney, the, and the applicant agree to the conditions listed in the, uh, staff memo dated April 24th, 2024. All four except the third condition, it's not necessary.
Those conditions are fine.
Great, uh, planning staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P202-0093 as presented to the board.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval.
Acting Vice Chair Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres? Uh, Commissioner Torres? Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky?
Aye, and good luck.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
And Chairman Langston?
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to item 12. This case P202-5-0034 is a minor site plan for 319 Grant Ave. Good evening, counsel.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, um, hopefully, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Um, this is another pretty straightforward application, so I'll, I'll be as brief as possible because I know you guys have a heavy agenda. Um, Jennifer Canerick from Price Meacham and DeArmenio on behalf of the applicant T-Mobile Northeast LLC. Uh, T-Mobile is licensed by the FCC to provide wireless telecommunications services. The applicant is proposing to place 12 antennas and ancillary, ancillary equipment on the roof of an existing residential multifamily building located at 319 Grant Ave., also known as Block 21802, Lot 9.01. This is actually a replacement site. They are decommissioning a wireless installation located at 346 Claremont Ave., so that's gonna pick up the, um, you know, swap out for, for what's being decommissioned. So the city code provides that the placement of antennas on existing structures is permitted, uh, in all city redevelopment areas. This property is located in what is known as your West Side Avenue redevelopment area. We also, um, in terms of the height, we're proposing a height of, the building is at 69 feet right now. The height of the proposed antenna is 81 feet. Um, because such height is necessary for T-Mobile's provision of service, um, this also is permitted per your code. The proposal also meets the design criteria set forth in, of the city code for the, but for the screening of antennas, for which your planner per her April 16th report recommended that we do not do screening, but instead we do, um, painting of the antennas to be Battleship Gray. Uh, lastly, the proposal also meets the requirements set forth in the West Side redevelopment area because the facilities will be placed on top of an existing structure, so we are not exacerbating any setbacks. So we are fully compliant and seeking minor site plan this evening. I do have with me my witnesses, engineer RF and planner. I leave it up to the board's discretion if they want to hear from any of them.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Um, the only question I would have, uh, I just want to make sure the painting on the antennas is a matte finish, not a gloss?
Not, okay, you got it.
Okay.
But Battleship Gray.
Yes, we love Battleship Gray here.
You got it.
So the total, the total height will be 81 feet?
Mm-hmm.
So it's 21 feet above the building?
Yeah, correct. Sorry, I was writing down his, uh, comment.
Okay, does anybody need engineering testimony?
The, uh, just, I want a quick question on the, uh, the one with the stab bucket hat, 21 feet above that, the, um, okay, so, um, imagine, um, everything is gonna be fastened down through the roof or through?
I'd have to swear in my engineer in order to answer that question.
The structural part?
Yep. Happy to do so.
Yeah, Eddie, if you want engineering testimony, we'll.
No, I'm good. I'm good, I'm looking at it, I'm looking at it better now.
It'll be structurally sound, I can guarantee that.
I'm looking at it better now, I'm just trying to see how, um, how free standard it is. Okay, I'm good.
Counsel, do you have the original, uh, notices? I saw them on the.
Um, I do not, but I can certainly provide them post-meeting.
Chairman, I'm in receipt of the affidavit and proof of publication on the portal. It does appear to be in order. It does appear to be in order. This was carried to tonight. So we're gonna mark it as A1, and counsel, if you could just send those over to the planning, so we have them on file.
Okay, so if we're not gonna get engineering testimony, I think we're all okay going forward?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
I see, I, I found what I was trying to say.
Okay.
Perfect.
All right, is anybody here from public that wants to comment on this application? Anyone from public?
Chair, see, there is no one from the public. I would like to close the public portion.
Second.
All right, motion is made and seconded, public is closed. General, anything you wanna add?
Steph agreed to the professional's testimony, and Steph recommend approval.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P 2025-0034 as presented to the board for approval with staff recommendation.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval.
Acting Vice Chair Gangadin?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres?
Aye.
And Chairman Langston?
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening, everyone.
Counsel, you too. All right, let's call case P 2024-0200 is a preliminary and final major site plan for 146 Summit Ave.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Charles Harrington of Connel Foley on behalf of the applicant. This is a notice case, so I do have the original notices to give to counsel.
Chairman, I see the affidavit, publication, proof of mailing with respect to the application at 146 Summit Ave. here in the city. Had the opportunity to review it. Again, this was noticed for a prior meeting, and we've carried the notice through, through to tonight's meeting. It does appear to be in order. We're gonna mark it as A1 for purposes of the record.
Thank you, counsel.
Okay, thank you. So the application before you tonight is for preliminary and final major site plan, and it does have some deviations being requested as part of it. The property, as you'll see during the presentation, it's, and what's before you, it's the, between Summit Ave. and Clifton Place and Fairmont Ave., which slopes down from Summit Ave. As you go down to the hill, more of that industrial area, and Cornellson Ave. is at the bottom. So this is located within Summit in the Fairmont redevelopment plan, which is not a, it's not a large redevelopment plan, but if you're over in that area, you probably see the, there was an old hospital formerly across the street that was demolished and redeveloped. So this is kind of a mirror project that's across the street that slopes down again from Summit to Clifton Place.
Mr. Harrington, I hate to interrupt you. What happened? This is 146 Summit Ave.
That's correct.
Did we skip 829 Bergen Ave.?
Oh, that, that was carried. I'm sorry.
I must've missed that.
Yeah, no, that, that's in old business.
Yeah, you have a different agenda, Santos.
Yeah, if you look at the.
Carry on, mine says May 27th, but it's all right.
Yeah, that's, I have it on adjournments. Yeah, see, missed a paper, right there, number six. It was adjourned on Thursday of last week, so you likely printed one prior to that. It was adjourned prior to the sunshine.
Yeah, I actually have both. I have the one with 829 from last week that I printed, and the one from the back of the room, which has it listed as old business. That was carried to June 10th.
Good.
All right.
On 146.
So this, this project before, it's a six-story and a seven-story building because of the slope of the property, and you'll see we are, we are asking for some bulk relief on the variances, specifically with regard to the number of stories and the height because of the slope. You'll see that during, during the presentation. It's also utilizing the affordable housing overlay provision of the ordinance, so we will have 10% of the units will be affordable units. We do have some parking within the project, notwithstanding that the affordable housing overlay eliminates that requirement, but we have 13 spaces. We're also providing for 64 bike spaces for the 64 units, so it's a one-to-one on the overall project. I do have, I have four witnesses here, but I plan on just presenting three. Our civil engineer, Ms. Galvin, and then Jeffrey Lewis will take us through the architecture. Charles Height will address the requested deviations. And our, our traffic engineer, Mr. Paraguay, is here in the event there are any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Daphne Galvin, D-A-P-H-N-E-G-A-L-V-I-N.
Ms. Galvin, good evening. Your license is current tonight?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, you're qualified.
Okay. Ms. Galvin, if you could take us away.
Sure. So just to get everyone orientated, up on the screen right now, we have sheet five of 13 of our site plans that were submitted to the board. Those were originally dated October 7, 2024, revised through February 24 of 2025. For orientation purposes, north is generally up on the screen, so over on the left side, we have Summit. Along the bottom, you can see Fairmont labeled right across the bottom, and then along the right side, we have Clifton Place. The property is known as Block 15302, Lots 1 and 47, street address 146 Summit Ave. It's an irregularly shaped lot containing approximately two tenths of an acre, and it's located within Zone 2 of the Summit and Fairmont redevelopment plan area. It's also subject to the affordable housing overlay. Summit Ave. is a two-way street with parking on just the east side, which is the subject side. Fairmont is also a two-way, two-way street running east and west with parking on both sides, and Clifton is a one-way roadway running northerly with parking on both sides. The surrounding area is a mix of uses, primarily residential. Under the current conditions, the site is vacant, and there's a parking area on the eastern end of the site. There's also a access provided from an existing driveway along Fairmont, about in the center of Fairmont Ave. The site is mostly impervious. It drains or is pitched from Summit down to Clifton, as mentioned by Mr. Harrington. There's actually a significant elevation drop from the two intersections. It's about 15 feet from Summit down to Clifton. In the proposed condition, the existing improvements, like the parking area and the driveway, will be eliminated, and the construction of a new multi-story building will be constructed with a total of 64 residential units, and with a garage access at this location along Clifton, right here. The building proposes a parking for 13 vehicles. The parking requirement is waived under the affordable housing overlay. We're also proposing a 10-foot-wide driveway, curb cut at this location right here on Clifton, and that widens to 14.9 feet for the entrance to the garage, and that'll be discussed in more detail by the architect. Along Fairmont, there were some early comments issued by the traffic department of the city. They wanted us to modify the curb return along Summit, and in modifying that curb return, it allowed us to provide a loading area along Fairmont, right in this area, right here. So as part of that modification along Fairmont, there's also some striping modifications proposed as, as Fairmont heads to the west towards the intersection with Summit. The building, or the project, is completely covered by the building except for a very small lawn area, so it's primarily impervious. With respect to stormwater management, it's, the project is classified as a major development under the city's stormwater ordinance, and to address those standards, as well as the JCMUA rules and regulations, we're proposing a 3,100-square-foot green roof and an underground detention system under the garage of the building. And then the discharge for that system, which is right here, is out to the existing combined sewer in Clifton Place. Other utilities, such as water, sewer, gas, telecom, all new utility services will be provided to the building. We've shown preliminary locations for those services, and those will be coordinated with the utility companies, including the MUA, when we get into the final design. Going to go to one other sheet here. So this is sheet number six of 13 of the plans that were submitted, same dates, October 7 of 2024, revised through February 24 of 2025. With respect to landscaping, we're proposing a total of seven street trees along Fairmont and Clifton. We're unable to provide any trees along Summit because of the limited frontage. Along Fairmont, where we have the five trees proposed, we're gonna put those trees in large concrete planters due to conflicts with underground utilities. We've done that on other projects. And then on Clifton, the two proposed trees will be planted in the typical tree pits based on the Jersey City forestry standards. Under those standards, we require, or the project requires one tree for every 25 feet of frontage, which would trigger the need for 13 trees. We're proposing seven trees, so the other six trees will, a monetary contribution will be made in lieu of constructing or installing the other six trees. With respect to lighting, we are proposing lighting upgrades along Fairmont. We're proposing a new Cobra fixture on an existing utility pole in this location here, and we're also proposing building-mounted lighting along the Fairmont frontage. The lighting along Summit and along Clifton is adequate without any upgrades. We have received several review letters and comments from the Division of Planning. We have the April 17, 2025 letter, and from the Division of Transportation Planning, we have an April 2, 2025 letter, and we will work with traffic and planning to address those comments. We also had some comments on Tyler from the Division of Forestry, and we'll work to resolve those comments. And lastly, we had some email comments from the JCMUA, and we'll address those comments also. That's all I have. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Thank you, Ms. Galvin. To be honest, it's not often that I hear a new word here. What is a Cobra head fixture?
Oh, a Cobra is a long arm with the light on the end of the arm, so most of the fixtures that you see in the city, typical fixture, not the decorative fixtures like the.
Sure.
The post hoc fixtures, but a more traditional roadway fixture.
Okay, I understand, yeah, I just never heard it called that.
Yeah, it's Cobra.
Okay, interesting. Thank you. That's it for me, though. That's my only question. Anybody else?
The, the trees that are gonna be planted on Fairmont because of the utilities, they'll be in the plan of boxes?
Yes.
Are they, they're trees that don't grow very large, I assumed, or?
Yeah, they're specifically selected because of the way they grow, and the idea is that we can't allow the roots to go underground because of the utilities there.
Because of the utilities?
Mm-hmm.
I know, I've never seen that.
Yeah, we did it on Summit years ago, a little further to the north, yeah.
Hmm, okay. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else for Ms. Galvin?
No.
All right, thank you, we appreciate it.
Okay, then our next witness is Mr. Lewis, our architect.
Hi.
Good evening again, Mr. Lewis, and if you could just confirm for the record that you have been sworn in and are still under oath tonight?
I am still under oath, yes.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay. So I'm gonna do something a little strange and start with the building elevations, just 'cause I think it helps to clarify all these levels that we have going on here. So this is the Fairmont Ave. elevation, and I wanna start by saying what we're calling the first floor. And the first floor is actually the first floor that has the entire floor above grade and nothing underground. That starts here at Summit Ave. It's actually three and a half feet above ground here and extends all the way across. There's the next floor below that is what we're calling the basement. That floor, excuse me, I'm on the wrong thing. Okay, so that includes, if you look, we have the main entry to the building right here, that's at the basement level. To the left of that is mostly building amenity space, and then to the right of that, we have apartments that are also above grade. And then below that, we have what we're calling our cellar. That only extends on the right half of the building, and that's mostly for the parking area and its access from Clifton Place. Also, I think you could see how the stories here are working, where it does read as six stories at the Summit Ave. elevation, as well as six stories over here at the Clifton Place elevation. However, our grade is, our elevations and our heights are measured from the middle of the building at the average grade. That gives us a building that's 71 feet tall, and it is, of course, seven stories in total, which does require a height variance. With that, while I'm here, I do wanna talk about some of the building finishes that we have going on. So we do have a dark gray smooth stucco finish at the base in the cellar area here, and then also down here, everything that's underground, basically. The main finish for the building is a dolomite gray smooth brick. We're doing two different brick patterns. Most of it is a standard brick pattern. However, we're also doing a recessed brick pattern. It's just each course, ones in, ones out, ones in, ones out. There's one of those right in the middle here, and then also one at each end, right here and here, these vertical sections. We also have a black metal panel sign band, which is located here above the basement area. At the top of the building, on the Summit Ave. side, we can, you can see we have this two-story section, which is differentiated. We have the finish there is a, they're charcoal gray vertical metal panel siding. We also have charcoal gray aluminum coping on the whole building. It's a little more substantial here where we have the vertical siding, and then it's less substantial here over the brick. This section here is a setback bulkhead, and we're just doing light-colored corrugated metal panels for that section. I also wanted to note, all the windows are black aluminum frames, and we also have matching P-Tex below them, so there'll be black P-Tex to match the window frames. P-Tex rails, excuse me. And then lastly here, I also, I wanna go back to the, the building entry here, 'cause there's a couple of things I just wanna note. One is the building numbers. They are fairly large. We are asking for a variance for that. We think it's appropriate for the building type and size. And then we're also asking for a kind of strange variance where we're not allowed to have windows that are less than 42 inches above grade to the sill of the window, and this one window right here is a little less than 42 inches above grade for the sill. And again, that's because we have, we're working with this sloped grade. To help mitigate that, we actually set the floor back a few feet, and we have a planter in front of that window with some planting to give a little bit of a buffer. With that, I'm going to move to the side elevations, and I think what we see on these sides, this is the, this is the Clifton Ave. side, excuse me, Clifton Place side on the right. This is the Summit Ave. elevation. We can see on both of those elevations that we're wrapping the finishes from Fairmont Ave. around both sides. The only thing that's really different here is since we go a little lower, we do have that black garage door here, and we have these raised planters on each side of that garage door. All the way to the left here, we have the rear elevation. We do have a slightly different building finish here, and we're using, the color is light mist, and this is fiber cement siding. We are using the same black frame windows and doors. Lastly, for the elevations, we have the south elevation. This is the long elevation, but the back of it. We can see on the Summit Ave. side, we are wrapping around that brick as well as those vertical metal panels, and that's going back about 15, 20 feet. Other than that, the finishes here and here, which are built right on the property line, that's a smooth stucco finish painted a dark gray color. Everything that's not on the, on the property line is being finished with that light mist fiber cement siding. That's here and all over here. Okay. So now I'm gonna jump back into the floor plans and walk through these. Here, we're looking at the cellar and the basement plan. I wanna start with the cellar at the bottom here. So this is Clifton Ave. on the right. Walking down that, that frontage, we have an egress doorway out, then we have the two planters and that 14-foot-11 driveway that leads into the garage area. The garage is a 13-car garage, as was mentioned previously. There are also two motorbike, motorcycle spaces over here on the right, and a room with 64 bicycle parking spaces. There's a. There's a trash compactor room here, which is fed from a trash chute above. And then there's also our meters and utilities, as well as the sprinkler room. This is a fully sprinkled building. And then two elevators up and the one stair up. All of this to the left is unexcavated here. Moving up to the basement level, I want to start right at that building entry in the middle of the building. To the left, we have those amenities spaces. There's a storage space, a six hundred and fifteen square foot gym, and a five hundred thirty-eight square foot co-working space. Also up here, there is a five hundred and eighty-three square foot residential lounge. This has access to the, the back patio and lawn area that will be for building tenants. We also have the trash room and chute here. And then there are six apartments on this floor. Two of them are studios colored in blue, and then four of them are one bedrooms colored in light gray. And then the only thing I do want to draw your attention to is that, that window that I mentioned that we need the variance for is right here in this bedroom. And you can see that it does have this planting area in front of that whole apartment. Okay, here at the bottom, we're looking at the, what we're calling the first floor. This is the first floor completely above grade. And then above this is the second, third, fourth, and fifth floor. So we have eleven apartments on the first floor. Three of them are studios, six are one bedrooms. There's one two-bedroom here, which is green, and then one three-bedroom here, which is a dark gray color. And I do want to stick with the three-bedroom here at the corner to note that we did also set back the first floor a couple of feet here to provide another planting area. And this is just because that corner is really tight. It's pretty close. It's a smaller, smaller walkway. So we wanted to give another buffer for this apartment instead of having those windows right at the sidewalk there. Looking up to the second to fifth floors, the apartment, the layout is exactly the same with the exception of that apartment we were just talking about, where it is extended all the way out now and becomes a two-bedroom apartment. And now we're moving on to the sixth floor and the roof. So here, we're looking at the sixth floor plan, which is actually half building. So the left side of this is building, and then the right side of this is our roof deck. So we have three apartments in the building on this floor, one two-bedroom and two one-bedroom apartments. On the right, we have our roof deck space. It's a one thousand eight hundred twenty-seven square foot roof deck, which is surrounded by one thousand and sixty square feet of green roof trays. We also have two mechanical areas that have our condensers for our common areas. And then looking at the upper roof, this is the roof that's above these apartments here. And that roof is not accessible, and it's only used for these green roof trays where we have two thousand and eighty square feet of them in total. And just to summarize, because I didn't in the beginning, the apartment is sixty, there's sixty-four apartments here. One three-bedroom, ten two-bedrooms, thirty-six one-bedrooms, and seventeen studios. That's it for me. I'm sure there are some questions. I'm happy to answer them. Unless Chuck, do you have something you want me to answer directly?
No, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, anyone?
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. The size of that sign on the ground floor, how big is that?
Um, it's on the, do you remember how many square feet it says on the? How many?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five square feet. Thank you, Chuck.
Just, just a quick question with Lewis.
Yes.
The brick color, I, on this, I'm seeing that dark color.
It's not that dark.
It's a light color.
Let me, I'll zoom in a little so you can see it better. It's this color, it's this here. It's more of a lighter gray with a little bit of a blend of dark.
So it's not a, it's not the beige.
Yeah, do you see it here? If you turn around?
Yeah, okay. That's what I was.
Much, much lighter, yeah.
Because I'm wondering, again, a whole different color.
Right, like, just turn around and look right there? Much lighter than.
Yeah, I got that.
Much lighter.
Yeah, I got that, okay. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Any questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you.
Okay, then our final witness will be Mr. Height to address the deviations.
All right, and Mr. Height, same as Mr. Lewis, you understand that you're still under oath. You've been sworn in and qualified tonight?
I do.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, I'll just jump right into it. We are in the Summit and Fairmount redevelopment plan. This is a smaller plan in the city. The other development to the south of this subject property has already undergone, underwent redevelopment. So for this proposed project, really what we're dealing with is some unique aspects of the site. It's a cap lot. There's three frontages and one interior side yard. And then we also have a substantial grade change, as we heard from the project engineer. It's about fifteen feet from side yard to, or between the two property frontages. With respect to the deviations, what we're looking at in this exhibit, and I think why the, Mr. Lewis just jumped right into, we've designed the overall building to be contextual to the, to the three frontages. This is the longest elevation along Fairmount. And you can see how, counting from the average grade, we are counting seven stories and we are measuring seventy-one feet. But from a contextual standpoint, the building still will read as a six-story building on the two ends. And that was the, the design intent. So overall, six stories is permitted, seven stories is being counted from average grade. And then sixty-five feet is permitted, seventy-one feet is calculated. Two other things I should mention, the seventh story is only a partial story, if you will. Still counts as a story, but it's only two thousand six hundred and eight square feet in size. And that's about thirty percent of the full floor below. So it is a modest seventh story, and it really just accomplishes that six-story feel along that one frontage. With respect to the window sill location, really, this was just an intuitive design aspect of the building. We are locating a residential unit. There is a bedroom in that location. We've set it back. As Mr. Lewis said, we also are providing some, for some screening outdoor. And likely, there will be interior screening for the, the future resident there. The intent for that is to provide for privacy for the residential being close, close proximity of the sidewalk. So we've tried to mitigate that with the design of where it's located and, and the screening. With respect to the driveway width, we do have a curb cut that's ten feet, but it, it widens to approximately fifteen feet. So I think it's fourteen feet, eleven inches. The rationale there, ten feet is permitted for the drop curb cut and the driveway. The rationale there was to try and give a little bit more maneuverability for people making this turning movement into the driveway, given the slope, as well as the fact that it's a two-way curb, two-way drive aisle interior. This isn't a two-way driveway. One vehicle will exit, one will be able to pull in. There's sufficient queuing in the building. But it will help for that maneuverability, given, given the, the slope of the driveway. With respect to the signage, thirty-five feet in this redevelopment plan, thirty-five square feet in this redevelopment plan is a substantial increase from what's permitted. Eight square feet is a very common residential scale of signage. What's being proposed here probably doesn't stand out to the eye in view, but as calculated, it's thirty-five square feet. So just two statistics for you to help put it into scale. This facade, fourteen thousand one hundred thirty-five square feet. It's the longest facade. The proposed signage is only point two percent. The city in other areas generally has a barometer of five percent in terms of a, a scalable percentage of permitted signage. Here, we're at point two. To me, it's really an aesthetic. It does help with building identification. You will not mistake this as one forty-six Fairmount. But it's located near the main entrance, and it's scaled appropriately with the overall design. Lastly, I just wanted to, to mention the street trees. I don't know if we're formally requesting relief, but we are complying with the requirements of the payment in lieu for the street trees that not, are not being shown. Is that a, a variance or?
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's technically a variance, but it's basically the way the forestry standards reads. If you can't provide the trees, you have to make the donation. So that's the option we're taking.
And just to clarify, the, um, the forester has approved this current layout. He reviewed it.
Okay, but it's not a deviation, right?
Uh, no, this would be a design waiver within the forestry standards, which is allowed. And is that the discretion of the forester?
Sure. And, and it's a hundred percent supported from a practical alternative standpoint. We heard from the project engineer about the complications of utilities, curb cuts, and things like that, both at grade and below grade. With respect to special reasons, I think that we are in a redevelopment plan. I do believe we're advancing the goals and objectives of the redevelopment plan. With respect to special reasons from the land use law, I do believe we're advancing the guidance of appropriate redevelopment of the property. Really, we're speaking to the intent of the overall vision of this project and the redevelopment plan. So I do think we're implementing that. We are also advancing an appropriate population density. We are exceeding the permitted maximum density in the redevelopment plan, but we're folding in the affordable housing overlay district. So that's realizing the affordable housing units. It removes that density cap. And I do believe that this is an appropriate, appropriate location. It's a cap lot. It's a substantially sized cap lot. So it's, it's an appropriate location for that density. With respect to the redevelopment plan, I don't believe there's impairment. Objective A, to encourage the assemblage of lots within the area in order to create suitable sites for primary residential development. Objective B, provide for a variety of housing types affordable to the family with a range of incomes. We're meeting both those objectives, A and B. There are others that I, I, I can offer to the board, but I think that, that's straightforward. I do believe we are addressing any sort of substantial impacts on the general welfare. We've mitigated the height. Really, contextually speaking, if, if there was a, a property line down the middle, this project would comply, given that it's a cap lot. We need relief for the building height, but the massing of it really is inconsistent with the intent of a six-story permitted building height. We also are introducing what Mr. Lewis referenced earlier, our vertical and horizontal building elements. So I think that speaks to the aesthetics of the overall property and that there's no impacts from the overall massing. I do think, with respect to the parking, this came up in a recent conversation. And I think coordination with transportation planning that we, we do have a pedestrian warning system, given that we have a curb cut near the intersection. There's concerns about that. So we included that in the project. I think that's my direct testimony. Don't have anything else to offer at this moment.
Any questions from the board?
I have none. Anybody else?
No, I'm good.
All right, thank you, Mr. Height. Thank you.
Okay. As I stated earlier, our traffic engineer is here tonight in the event the board has any questions. But other than that, that would complete our presentation.
Okay, thank you. Anybody want traffic testimony? We could always come back to it if, you know, if we need to.
No.
Okay. All right, so at this time, let's open it up for public comment. Is anybody here from the public that wants to comment on this application? Anyone from public?
Chair, see, there is no one from the public. I would like to close the public portion.
Second.
All right, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Matt, do you have anything for us?
Staff substantiates the accuracy of Mr. Height's testimony regarding meeting the positive and negative criteria for the variances. Just to, I guess, pose a little thought experiment to contextualize the proposed bulk of the building. The applicant could have developed the site as two separate buildings, and each side would have been compliant on its own. But obviously, you have economies when it comes to things like egress, when you build a single building, plus you often get better unit layouts and the like. And so staff felt it was appropriate to support this deviation here, even though it's an affordable housing overlay project, which we're often cautious and reticent about supporting bulk variances for. And so staff published a report dated April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. In that report, there are seven proposed resolution conditions. Is the applicant willing to agree to those conditions?
Yes, they'd all be acceptable.
With that being said, staff recommends approval of conditions.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case B two zero two four dash zero two zero zero is presented to the board together with staff recommendations and conditions.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval.
Acting Vice Chair Gangadin?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky?
Yeah, I think it's a nicely designed building. I think it'll be a nice bookend to the Summit JC across the street. I vote aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres?
Aye.
And Chairman Langston?
Yeah, I think the variances, Mr. Height made the case for it, and I agree with his testimony, so I'm going to vote aye on this.
Motion carries six zero.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, do you want to take five now? Okay. Yeah, let's take a five-minute break, everybody. We'll be back in a couple. Case number P two zero two five dash zero zero five two preliminary and final major site plan with C variances for one oh nine to one eleven Beacon Avenue. Counsel, you want to carry that matter?
Yes, good evening, Chairman. For the record, Benjamin Wine of Prime Tuvell and Mecelli, on behalf of the applicant. We would, given the time, like to take the opportunity to request to adjourn this matter to the June tenth meeting with preservation of notice if possible.
Cam?
That would not, no, we would have to go to July fifteenth, and that would be your best option.
I mean, listen, we'll, we'll do what we have to do, but is there even an option for June twenty-fourth? Even just to put it on and to the extent that it has to be further carried, we'll, we'll deal with it. But just to avoid further delay if possible.
The June twenty-fourth is already full. It would have to be July fifteenth.
Yeah, I, I hesitate to put something on that we know that we're going to carry in case somebody from the public comes, and then they sit here all night and we don't get to it.
Understood.
So I'd rather have a definite date. Cam's been on.
You'd have a chance at July fifteenth. You wouldn't.
Okay. Okay, then it is what it is.
Okay, so we'll call it July fifteen. All right, thank you, counsel.
And just confirming that's with preservation of notice.
Yes, with preservation of notice.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, counsel. Have a good night. And we do have, we, we've had scheduling issues with security up front. We have to be out of the building tonight by ten thirty. So ten o'clock is our drop dead date for any testimony, any applications. And then we have to get resolutions read into the record and handle any board business past that. So even if we're in the middle of a sentence, ten o'clock tonight, we have to cut off. Apologize, counsel. The floor is yours, though. So let's call item fourteen, this case P two zero two five dash zero zero one six is a plan amendment, preliminary and final major subdivision, preliminary and final major site plan with C variances for one ninety Chapel Ave.
Good evening, everybody.
You look surprised.
My name is Jimmy Khan from the law firm of Connell Foley in Jersey City. I'm here on behalf of the applicant Port Liberté Apartments LLC, the owner and developer of this project. This project is at one ninety Chapel Avenue, block two seven five oh three. Approved as lots thirteen, fourteen, sixteen, and seventeen. However, subsequently, it's been consolidated. It's now known as sixteen point one pursuant to a subdivision. This is a notice case, counsel.
Chairman, I received the affidavit and those proof of mailing with respect to the application at one ninety Chapel Avenue. I've had the opportunity to review it. It does appear to be in order. We're going to mark it as A1 for purposes of the record. And counsel, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe this is an administrative amendment with respect to the solar panels that were proposed at the project.
Yes, I was, I was getting there. That's all that this application is. This application is in the Cave and Point redevelopment area. This project was approved in May of two thousand twenty-two. It's a four hundred and one-unit, five-story building with seven-story parking garage and six hundred and two parking spaces. The sole purpose of tonight's application is this. The, in two thousand twenty-two, the application was approved with solar panels on the roof. They are not required by the redevelopment plan. They are not required by the JCLDO. It was a voluntary thing that the owner of the building wanted to do. They wanted to have solar panels on the, on the roof of the project. So the site plans show, the renderings show solar panels. What happened subsequently is the applicant applied to PSENG to connect the solar panels to the electric grid in that neighborhood. And they received a denial letter from PSENG. Basically, the grid in that area cannot handle the solar panels that were proposed by the applicant. So they can't install the solar panels on the roof of the building. So the only reason I'm here tonight is just to conform my So the only reason I'm here tonight is just to conform my site plan approval to to what's actually been constructed, which is this building is up and there's a roof without solar panels. So the only reason I'm here is to ask you to amend the site plan approval to eliminate the solar panels from the roof of the building, because that's what's shown on the approved plans from 2022 and the approved resolution from 2022. That's it. And what you see on the screen is a rendering of the building without solar panels, the approved rendering that you're look that from 2022 showed the solar panels. It's the only difference.
Okay, understood, counsel. Cam, I haven't reviewed the testimony from that application. Were the solar panels a consideration in any kind of variance?
No, we were, I reviewed it myself. I thought the same, and no, they were not.
Okay.
And actually, there were no variances or deviations. That was an as-of-right project that fully complied with the redevelopment plan, just for the record.
Okay, thank you, counsel. That was my only question. Anybody else?
No.
So just just to be clear, counsel, that they were never installed?
Never installed.
Never installed, okay.
PSENG denied before they installed. PSENG denied the connection.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Is there anybody from the public that wants to comment on this application? Anyone from public?
Chair, see, that there is no one from the public. I would like to close the public portion.
Second it.
Okay, public is, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Cam, do you have anything you want to add?
Staff just asked that you agree to the conditions in the staff memo dated April 15th of this year.
Applicant agrees. Applicant agrees to the conditions.
And planning staff recommends approval.
All right, thank you.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P2025-0016 as presented to the board for approval.
Second.
All right, motion is made and seconded for approval. Acting Vice Chair Gangadin?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky?
Think this falls under the category, it's better to have tried and been denied, and good try, and I vote aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
And Chairman Langston?
Aye.
All right, motion carries all in favor with conditions. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. So let's call item 15, case P2024-0184, is a conditional use at 11 Bostwick Ave.
Good evening again, everyone. Michael Higgins of Castano Quickly Trammy for the applicant. Counsel, I have the original notices.
Chairman, I'm going to receive the affidavit publication proof of mailing with respect to the application before the board this evening. This matter was previously scheduled and carried to tonight with preservation of that notice. Going to mark it as A1 for purposes of the record.
All right, thank you.
So this is 11 Bostwick. It's block 23501, lot 37. This is in the R1 zone. It's an existing two-family house pursuant to some of the relatively new zoning provisions in the LDO. The applicant is converting the garage space into an additional dwelling unit. To accomplish that, they need conditional use approval. Without further ado, I'll have the architect sworn in, and we can go through the conditions in his testimony.
And I am still under oath.
Thank you. And you were still qualified, Mr. Lewis.
Still qualified.
All right, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, so this is an existing two-family home with a ground floor garage, and we're converting that garage into a 945 square foot, three-bedroom, two-bath apartment. Looking at the site plan down here, first of all, obviously, we're removing that curb cut. There's an existing tree. We're going to expand the tree pit into a Jersey City conforming tree pit. We are removing the entire driveway, and we're replacing that with a planting area. That planting area is going to be enclosed with a 20-inch-high landscape block wall. We are keeping a three-foot walkway from the from the, excuse me, in the driveway area to provide access to the trash, which is located underneath the front stairs. Along the left side of the building, there's an existing door into the first floor, into the ground floor, which we're going to slightly relocate, and that will be the main entry to this new apartment. We are proposing new fences along the side and the back. That's going to be a six-foot board-on-board wood fence. Also, in the backyard, as you can see on the existing, there's a lot, there's mostly paving. We are removing all of that paving and providing a grass backyard. So currently, we are way over on lot coverage by removing the paving in the back and removing the driveway in the front. We are now actually way under on lot coverage, so we're in full compliance with block coverage Okay, so here, the bottom is the existing plan, and the top is what we're proposing. So at the bottom, you can see almost the entire ground floor is garage. There's also half bath, a storage area, and a mechanical room. We are eliminating the half bath and the storage area. The mechanical room is going to be reduced in size, and we're adding a new entry door from the backyard to get directly to that room. You can see that up here. So looking to the relocated apartment entrance, which is located here, you enter into the living area. There's an one en suite bathroom in the front of the apartment, and in the back, we have two bedrooms, one bath, and laundry area. Looking around the outside of the building, the existing garage door is going to be going to be replaced with three windows, which are going to match the windows above. On the side, as I mentioned, we're slightly relocating the side door. We're also adding two new windows, which we took care to make sure are facing directly into empty wall space on the building across from us. You can see where their windows are and where our windows are, and they're all staggered from each other. So that, plus the six-foot board-on-board fence, there's going to be some screening between these two houses. And then also, in the backyard, we are relocating one of the AC condensers and adding a third, and we're providing new 42-inch-high screening around both. Okay, here, we're looking at the front and rear elevation. At the top is what's existing, and I think you can see there are very minor changes here. On the front elevation, we are replacing the garage door with windows, as I mentioned. The windows are a little smaller than that existing garage door, so the finish around the windows is going to be a smooth stucco finish, which will be painted to match the brick around it. We also, you can see the new landscape block wall on the front. Looking to the rear elevation, here we have that new door into the mechanical room. We have the new air conditioners with the screening, showing a detail of the wood slat screening detail on the left here. And also, there's a double hung window, which we're changing to a casement window, but leaving the window the same size. And then lastly, here, we're showing that side elevation, where you can see that we slightly moved the back this door. It's moving maybe a couple feet to the left, and then we added these two new windows. And that will conclude my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions if you have any.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lewis. I have none, actually. Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Sure.
Just the, I see the entrance door coming into the living room, the one that goes into the mechanical room, but that also goes into the back of the yard, right?
Which?
You said there's a door that goes from...
Yeah, so we have a walkway along the side here, where, and we have one door into the residential unit. And then in the backyard, in the backyard, we have an entrance to the mechanical room. That's the only way to get to the mechanical room.
From the mechanical room and through the backyard.
From the backyard, correct. Yeah, and that's for all three apartments, that mechanical room.
All right, anybody else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you.
Counsel, that's your presentation?
Yes, that is our presentation.
Okay. Is there anybody here from public that wants to comment on this application? Anyone from public?
Chair, see, no one from public. I would like to close the public portion.
All right, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Eric, anything?
Yeah, I'll try to be brief. Staff has determined that this is an as-of-right proposal. As we as we saw that the there are very minor facade changes, so the character of the building's pretty much remaining the same. Lot coverage is decreasing significantly. Tree pits being expanded, so it's kind of eliminating those nonconformities of the site. And most importantly probably is they're increasing the number of units within the principal structure, so it's addressing the housing needs in the city. Staff recommends approval, provided that the applicant agreed to the conditions in the staff memo.
The conditions are fine.
Okay. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case B to 024-0184 as presented to the board with staff recommendation and approval.
All right, motion is made and seconded. For approval. Sorry.
Acting Vice Chair Gangadin?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky?
The comparison between before and after is stunning, so good job, and thank you. I vote aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
And Chairman Langston?
Yeah, this one's an easy aye for me. You know, we're adding a unit, we're adding a street parking spot now, so it's an easy aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Okay, so let's move on to item 16, and I think, counsel, you want to call item 17 as well at the same time, correct?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so let's call item 16, case P2024-0229, is a review and discussion of master plan amendment within Cave-in Point redevelopment plan, as well as item 17, case P2024-0182, is a preliminary and final major site plan and interim use for 200 Chapel Avenue.
So good evening again, everybody. James McCann from the law firm of Connell Foley, appearing on case P2224-182 and case And yes, we wanted to call these two cases together because what we would like to do is first present the site plan application to the board, because if you understand the site plan application, you will then understand the reason why we are applying to make to have a conforming amendment adopted to the Cave-in Point master plan. So it would be more efficient to present the site plan approval first and the master plan amendment second. Also, if you were to deny the site plan approval for some reason, then there would be no reason to amend the master plan. I don't mind if the board votes on both of them at the very end, so you have the full discretion to decide however you want on both matters.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
Chairman, I'm going to receive the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the preliminary and final major site plan. I've had the opportunity to review it. It does appear to be in order. We're going to mark it as A1 for purposes of the record, and that's with respect to We're also going to mark for purposes of the record as A1 on case P2024-229, the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the proposed amendment to the master plan. So that'll be A1 on case P2024-0229. Just so everybody is clear, I see members of the public are here. I suspect they are here for this application or these applications. We've gone through this before board with respect to this particular redevelopment plan, the Cave-in Point redevelopment plan. This plan's been around since the early 80s. It's probably changed its name over time, but in this particular redevelopment plan, there is the Cave-in Point master plan, which, quite frankly, while referenced in the redevelopment plan itself, is, for lack of a better term, a large map that lays out different portions of the Cave-in Point redevelopment plan. And it was a conceptual plan when Cave-in Point came to be. So I think it's appropriate that we hear the site plan and then deal with this, what Mr. McCann has referred to as an amendment to the master plan. I, in my mind, view it as an update to that document for tracking purposes. With that, counsel.
Just a brief introduction. Commissioners, the property that we're going to discuss tonight is block 27503, lot 15 on the Jersey City tax maps. It's also known as 200 Chapel Ave. It's approximately nine and a half acres between the Port Liberté existing community and the Liberty National Golf Course. It is the Cave-in redevelopment Cave-in Point redevelopment plan that we're discussing and the proposed project is 168 stacked townhome-style condominiums in 19 separate buildings. Each building will be four stories high. Each unit will have two parking spaces, one in a garage and one on a driveway, and there will be 80 guest parking spaces. Pulte Homes is a nationally-known developer. They are the contract purchaser of this property. The property is still owned by New Liberty Residential Urban Renewal, and the relief requested tonight is on the site plan application, a preliminary and final site plan. We do not have any deviations. We do not have any variances to put on the record. The project is fully conforming with the Cave-in Point redevelopment plan. And as counsel said, the second part of the, oh, there is also an interim use application. The applicant is requesting permission to put a temporary sales trailer on the site with temporary signage that would be both directional to to direct potential buyers to the site or interested parties to where the site, where the sales trailer would be located. And then the amendment to the master plan is a conforming amendment to the master plan in my mind, and I think counsel's also. It is keeping track of what site plan approvals have been granted for this master plan area. We're not asking for any, we're not asking to exceed the coverage requirement, and we're not asking to exceed the density requirement, and those are the only two requirements that apply in the master plan. We are within both of those thresholds, as you will see. I'm going to now give you my first witness, Ms. Lauren Bellardo of Langin Engineering. She's the project engineer, and she's going to walk you through the site plan application for the project.
Thank you, counsel.
Yes. I do. Sure. My name is Lauren Bellardo, B as in boy, E-L-A-R-D as in dog, O.
Ms. Bellardo, good evening. Your license is current tonight?
It is current.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Thank you. Okay, so I'll just start by going through the existing conditions for the project, and I'll orient the the planning board to this site through this exhibit that is up on the screen entitled Existing Conditions. It's dated May 20th, 2025, and north is oriented to the left side of the page. And the aerial image within the background is from June of 2024, so within the last year.
Lauren, just one question. You made this exhibit up for presentation to the board, correct?
Correct, yes.
This is not one of our filed plans?
That is correct. This plan was not previously filed, but it's just an aerial image of the existing conditions of the site.
And you have two more exhibits. The next two exhibits are the filed plans?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So counsel, A2 for identification for all three.
So A2 is going to be the three exhibit set?
Yes, sir.
Very good. A2.
Okay. So the project site is located at 200 Chapel Avenue in the Port Liberté section of Jersey City. The site is block 27503, lot 15, and the site is approximately nine and a half acres in area. To the west is Chapel Avenue. To the north is Liberty National Golf Course. To the south is the adjacent Port Liberté Residential Development, and to the east is Liberty National Golf Course and beyond that, the Hudson River. And although the site is vacant and was recently being used as construction staging area for the neighboring apartment building redevelopment that's just completed, the Oliver, the parcel was envisioned to be a residential development as part of the Cave-in Point redevelopment plan. The site is relatively flat, with the existing grades ranging from elevation eight to elevation 12 throughout the site. And then within the site frontage, there's an existing sanitary pump station that's relatively close to Chapel Avenue. There's also a temporary dog run that's located on this site, on the eastern portion of the site, so page north on on this exhibit, that is currently being utilized by the neighboring Port Liberté Development. The site is part of an overall Port Liberté master plan, which was most recently amended in May of 2022. was most recently amended in May of twenty twenty two, and it currently envisions a development for five hundred and twelve dwelling units for this parcel. So I'll now go into some of the proposed improvements for the project. So the project name for this site is Liberty Watch, and I would like to share with you this exhibit entitled "Plan Rendering," and this is dated September thirteenth, twenty twenty four. And similar to the last exhibit, north is also oriented to the left side of the page. The proposed project is a residential development that's fully conforming with the Caven Point redevelopment plan. It includes one hundred and sixty eight stacked townhome units in a self-contained community. And although this was envisioned to have a much larger, much larger residential buildings as part of the Port Liberté master plan, this applicant wanted to develop a less dense townhome community, providing more aesthetically pleasing development, and also adhering to the NJDEP flood hazard requirements and stormwater rules. There will be nineteen buildings proposed on site. Each building will be varying in length as the number of units within each building differs. So there's between four and sixteen units per building. Access to the site will be via one full access stop-controlled driveway along Chapel Avenue, and there will be a sign with the name of the community, which complies with the ordinance requirements. All of the townhomes are proposed to have garages facing the interior of the site, with the fronts of the structures facing the roadway network and adjacent lots. And this was intended to limit the view of the vehicular areas of the site from the neighboring lots, so specifically limiting those vehicular areas from the neighboring residential community as well as Liberty National Golf Course. For parking on site, we have two parking spaces proposed per unit. One is within an internal garage for each unit, and one is within the driveway space for each unit. So that totals three hundred and thirty six spaces, unit specific. And then in addition to that, we also have proposed eighty guest parking spaces within the development. There will not be any on-street parking, or, and there's no parking anticipated at all on Chapel Avenue. All the guests will park within this enclosed community. So there will be a total of four hundred and sixteen spaces with the three hundred and thirty six plus the eighty guest parking spaces. And of the eighty guest parking spaces, there will be twelve EV spaces that will comply with the state EV requirements, as well as four ADA parking spaces as well to comply with ADA requirements. All of the internal driveways were originally designed to accommodate two-way traffic and emergency vehicles throughout the site. We did receive some review comments from the Jersey City Traffic and Transportation Divisions, and we met with them, and we agreed during our meeting with them to reconfigure several of the drive aisles, specifically the ones around buildings twelve and fifteen, which are, I don't know if you can see my cursor. They're kind of in the wider portion of the site where you see there's six buildings, six buildings kind of making a rectangle. We would modify those driveways to be one-way in the counterclockwise direction to address their comments. There will be one emergency access driveway via a grass paver driveway, and that's through Aurora Place. So the driveway itself is on our site, but it would connect to Aurora Place within the neighboring Port Liberté Development. And this is for emergency vehicle use only, and the emergency access vehicles can go either way, so both communities would benefit from that emergency access. The access will be gated with a Knox box, so only for emergency access use. There are five-foot-wide sidewalk, sidewalks proposed throughout the site for pedestrian use, as well as sidewalks within the frontage of the site along Chapel Avenue to provide pedestrian access to the Hudson River walkway, as well as the New York Waterway Ferry Terminal. We also have several amenity spaces that are proposed throughout the site. These include a large flower garden within the site frontage, as well as some seating areas and a dog park. And there are also some quiet seating areas that are sprinkled throughout the site, as well as large gathering spaces for the residents' use. And in addition to that, we also have a tot lot proposed, which is essentially a small playground for those future residents that have young families. The perimeter of the site is proposed to have a four-foot-high decorative black aluminum fence to separate the Liberty Watch property from the neighboring lots. There's no gates envisioned except for at the emergency driveway. And in some areas, the fencing will be located on top of a proposed retaining wall. The retaining wall is, on average, two and a half feet in height. The new community will be responsible for maintaining its own amenities, including landscape lighting, sidewalks, et cetera. With regard to trash, there is an existing trash collection area located within the site frontage that serves the existing adjacent residences. And the existing location of the trash collection will be maintained, but it will be reoriented to make the space more functional. And access will be off of the new community driveway rather than off of Chapel Avenue. We're also providing fencing and screening around the area to provide a cleaner aesthetic within the area. So there won't be any changes in terms of operations to this trash collection area with regard to the frequency of pickup or any operations that are occurring today. We're just reorienting this area and making it more aesthetically pleasing. The new development will not be utilizing the existing trash collection area. They will, you know, have trash kept at the garages and at the units. That'll be picked up on trash day.
Just to make it clear to the board, the reason this is being done is because there's an easement agreement between the existing owner of the property, that the applicant is purchasing the property from, and the homeowners' association, that when this site is developed, the applicant, whoever the developer is, is required to remodel and build out a permanent trash facility for the neighboring development. So that's what you're seeing. That's what Lauren is explaining to you. So this will not be used by the new community. This trash, this trash area will be used by the existing community. They're using it right now, but it's temporary and it's in pretty bad shape. So this is an improvement for the benefit of the neighboring property owner, and they will be the only ones that use it once it is built.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, so I'll just talk a little bit about the, the project site with regard to the flood hazard area. So the site is located in a title flood hazard area of the Hudson River. It has a flood hazard elevation of twelve, and the majority of the site does fall within that flood hazard area. So as a requirement by NJDEP, the proposed design includes raising site elevations for the project to bring the building and parking areas above that required flood hazard elevation. And this is for conformance with the NJDEP flood hazard rules and regulations. So the project will raise grades across the site by about three feet on average, and we took that into account when we were designing the site grading and the stormwater so that the runoff would be collected on-site and then treated using eleven green infrastructure manufactured treatment devices prior to it being discharged to the conveyance system that is connected to the wet ponds that are located on the Liberty National Golf Course. And there is an easement in place that allows that conveyance of stormwater from the Port Liberté developments to those wet ponds within Liberty National Golf Course. And the wet ponds do directly connect to the Hudson River. So there's no stormwater that's being directed or sent to the adjacent residential community, and the stormwater design has been reviewed by NJDEP, and we recently received our flood hazard permit from NJDEP indicating approval of the stormwater design as well as the site design. So I noted that there's an existing sanitary pump station on-site that serves the Port Liberté master plan area. This existing pump station will remain, but it's now, you know, included in that fenced-in area with the trash enclosure area as well. So that will remain. For lighting, we're providing a mix of area light fixtures and ballard light fixtures. All new lighting will be LED and match the fixture style that's being used throughout the Port Liberté area and meet the requirements within the ordinance. The pole-mounted fixtures are fourteen feet in height, and the ballard-mounted fixtures are being proposed around the property line of the site to limit throw of light over the property line. And all pole-mounted fixtures that are near the property line are not facing the property line. They're facing away from the property line, so they're also not throwing light in that direction. With regard to landscaping, we are proposing an attractive landscape plan that includes one hundred and ninety-seven new trees, including fifty-one shade trees, twenty-three ornamental trees, one hundred and twenty-three evergreen trees, seventeen hundred and two shrubs, as well as perennials and grasses throughout the site. And in addition to all of the permanent improvements I just discussed, in order for the applicant to sell all of the units, there will be a temporary sales office on-site. So please see exhibit entitled "Sales Office Plan." That was last revised February fifth, twenty twenty five, and north is oriented to the left side of the page. So this plan shows a one-story sales office with a square footage of approximately fourteen hundred forty-four square feet. There will be temporary utility service for the office, as well as landscaping and proposed parking out front. And there will be temporary marketing signage for the development as well, and directional signage, including banners and, as shown on this plan.
Mr. Chairman, the interim use section of the redevelopment plan provides that interim uses may be granted for a period of up to three years by this board, with the possibility of extension. But for right now, the applicant is requesting that the interim use approval be for three years, which includes the signage, that it commence when the applicant pulls its first building permit, and that it expire at the earlier of the sale of the last unit for the project, one hundred and sixty-eight units, the sale of the last unit, or the three-year period.
Okay. Understood, counsel. Thank you.
We've received approval from Hudson Essex Passaic Soil Conservation District, as well as a flood hazard individual permit from NJDEP. And we've also received a conditional letter of map revision from FEMA to reflect the improvements for the site. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time, unless, Jim, did I miss anything?
No, I think you got everything. Thank you.
Be happy to answer any questions.
Just, just one last thing there. Lauren did show you in the existing conditions that there is a dog run on this property, and it's being used by the neighboring community, the existing Port Liberté community. This applicant is not providing a dog run to replace that one. It is the applicant's understanding that the current owner of the property has contacted the existing community, the HOA, the homeowners' association there, and offered compensation for the fact that that dog run is being removed. It's a temporary dog run. It's not approved pursuant to any site plan that's previously been granted to the community. It was put there as a temporary facility for the benefit of the residents, but there's no easement that requires it to be there. So it's being removed from the property as part of this application, and the current owner is going to work something out. It's our understanding. Try to work something out with the existing homeowners' association.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
To compensate for that dog run.
So counsel, when you say the current owner, I suspect that is also the seller of the property.
Yes, sir.
And the applicant is the contract purchaser.
Yes.
Can we just zoom out, and can you just share with us? You keep referring to the neighboring residential development. Is it all blocks and lots that are on the screen?
Yes, Lauren, do you want to just, can you zoom in on that and we can?
Sure.
So the dark green is obviously the project, and the neighboring community is the existing Port Liberté community, and it is, in fact, the block and lots that you show that are kind of shaded a little bit in black and, I guess, black and white.
So that's lots sixteen, twenty-one, and twenty-two?
Yes, sir.
Yes, and I can, I think we can discuss that further also as part of the master plan.
Sure.
But yes, those, those are the, that is the neighboring community, counsel, and board members. The other side is, obviously, it's just the golf course, the other, the other side of the project.
Yeah, and we added these labels just to, for context.
Sure.
For, you know, to provide the site location and the surrounding area, not necessarily to characterize that, you know, we're calling these all of the blocks and lots that encompass the, the neighboring community, but in this case, they do.
And counsel, is the applicant's proposed project going to stand completely on its own and have its own, you had stated it's going to be condominiums, it's going to have its own homeowners?
Yes.
Or condominium association, independent of the neighboring community?
Yes. This project will be completely independent of the existing neighboring community, except for the emergency access provision, portion that Lauren showed you. That emergency access is pursuant to an easement that exists between the existing, between the seller of the property, as you said, and the neighboring community. So the emergency access is pursuant to a written document. But other than that, everything about this community will be independent. They will maintain their own amenities, and they will not be permitted to use the amenities of the existing neighboring community.
But that access easement already exists and has been memorialized.
Yes.
And put into the
Yes.
Title.
It's an existing written easement that's been memorialized and recorded in the Hudson County Register's office well before this applicant was involved in the property.
Okay, understood. How is that locked gate handled? You mentioned there was some kind of a
Yeah, so there's, it's, it'll, it will be locked, and then there's what's called a Knox box that will be proposed next to the, the gate that only emergency personnel can open and access.
Okay, so no member of the public, none of the HOAs, have access to that box?
That, that's correct. Only people who have, you know, a, a specific key to that box have access to the box, which is typically the emergency personnel.
Okay, gotcha. That's my only question at this point. Anybody else?
Yeah, so the ingress and egress is, seems to be where the sanitation dump is, right?
Uh, yes.
So we prefer not to call it a dump.
Fair enough.
Trash collection area.
Your collection, your debris discarding area, okay. So is that the only egress and ingress into this portion of the development?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, because I'm looking at a map, and it looks like, I mean, so your constellation's and the other one, an Aurora that I see on there. But the other road is, it seems like there are two other ways of being able to get to Chapel. And the only reason I say that is with the Oliver project, southeast of it, and the others, and if they're coming, and so they would bring their debris over to the development for discarding. I'm, I'm not a traffic engineer, I'm not a Langdon employee, but it just seems, it could be, if that's the only ingress and egress, to be a little challenging. And maybe there might be another way based on what I'm looking at on the maps of, you know, seeing that there could be two ways to get to Chapel.
Well, so we proposed this to traffic engineering, and for the most part, they accepted it. What they did want, I believe, and you can correct me, Lauren, is, they want a sidewalk in front of the trash area?
Yes, they did want a sidewalk connecting the sidewalk from, you know, south of, or east of building one to the sidewalk along Chapel Avenue for pedestrian use.
I think, Commissioner, the, the easiest way for the existing community to access that, because they'll be the ones using it, in light of where the community is located, is for them to, to bring their trash to that, to that site. is for them to, to bring their trash to that, to that site. So I'm not quite sure. Thought we had it in the best possible place, and that's the existing location of it anyway, so. Is the area big enough, Lauren, for a garbage truck to go in there and pick up without it impeding people entering and exit, entering and exiting the community?
Yes, yeah, it, it's, we, we reoriented and redesigned this area of the site to allow for the trucks to enter this area and maneuver.
Back in and not blocked, back in and not blocked?
Yes, yep.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, real quick one. The interim building that you're going to be proposing for sales, that's not part of the nineteen buildings that are coming up, right? And is it going to be, I've seen it before, it's like, like a trailer, but it's going to look more like a building, right?
Yeah.
For the permanent three years, yeah?
Yes, that's correct.
Something that's temporary, but it still looks like something that's permanent?
Correct.
Okay.
It's also landscaped. It's going to be?
Yeah, landscaped and?
Has separate parking.
Yep, okay.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, the time is nine fifty-eight. I would prefer not even call a new witness, just to have a clean break.
My next witness is the architect, then if we have to call it, then you can call it. We might, he, all that'll happen is he'll get qualified and we'll have to call it, so. You can call it now if you want.
Yeah, I'd, I'd rather just make a clean break before bringing up another witness. Okay, Cam, do we have a?
You're not going to tell me July twenty-fourth, are you?
When we can get this in?
Probably July fifteenth. I'll tell you, it's not going to be July tenth, or June tenth, or June twenty-fourth, so.
It'll be under old business July fifteenth.
Old business July fifteenth.
Did you want to say something, Michael?
Yes, I did.
Okay, could, please. Okay.
So we have a cutoff. Security leaves the building at ten thirty. They lock the doors. Now, the problem is, we, according to the Open Public Meetings Act, we cannot have a locked door at a public meeting. So if we're not done wrapped up with, we still have more business to do internally that happens at every meeting. So if we're not done with that business at ten thirty, we can't operate anymore. Once those doors are locked, this board has to stop taking testimony. It's, believe me, I'd stay until one in the morning if I could, sir. No, we've done it, but it's, you know, we have that time for a specific reason. There is apparently a contract issue with security and that time can be mobile. But tonight, it's ten thirty, so.
But it's also on the record that there's ten of you here. And, you know, counsel not wanting to rush, this is a major project.
Yeah.
So to have the architect present in a?
Yeah, I don't want to rush anything.
Right.
Yeah, we don't rush anything.
If you can come back would be great, maybe. Eleven.
Eleven, okay.
Let's say eleven people.
Okay, so we're going to carry at this point. We do have to wrap this up. And, Cam, old business, July, what is it, fifteenth?
July fifteenth, old business.
Applicant consents, we'll be back.
Okay.
Right behind Mr. Wine.
For everybody in the room, the next hearing on this application is July fifteenth. It'll be upfront at the beginning of the meeting. It won't be at ten o'clock. It's under old business.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, all right, let's move on to memorialization of resolutions, please.
Sure, there is eleven resolutions for tonight.
I don't have your conversations, but please have them outside. Let's, we still have a couple of things to do here. I appreciate it.
Resolution for the planning board for the city of Jersey City, approving a conditional use applicant Grass Health Company for preliminary and final major site plan with conditional use. Approval five twenty-three Tunnel Lee Avenue, block three-two-zero-three, lot seven-eight-nine. Case number is P two-zero-two-four-dash-zero-one-four-nine. Second is York Street West LLC for one-year extension for preliminary and major site plan approval with deviations fifty-eight dash sixty Center Street College and York Street and two-one-four Bright Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, block one-three-eight-zero-five, lots four, five, six, seven, and eight. Case numbers P two-zero-two-five-dash-zero-zero-three-six. Third is applicant Journal Square Plaza Urban Renewal Associates, LP for preliminary site plan approval with deviations two-nine-six-five Kennedy Boulevard, Jersey City, New Jersey, block nine-four-zero-three, lot fourteen, case number is P two-zero-two-four-dash-zero-one-two-seven. Fourth is applicant Monticello Two Hundred LLC for amendment, final site, final major site plan approval, seventy-two Jewett Avenue, also known as two-hundred-dash-two-four Monticello Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey, block one-six-eight-zero-one, lot forty-five-point-zero-two, also known as block one-six-eight-zero-one, lots forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven. Case number is P two-zero-two-five-dash-zero-zero-seven-five. Fifth is approving a two-year extension of the approved preliminary and final major site plan and deviation. Case number is P two-zero-two-five-dash-zero-zero-six-one. Four-one-sixteen Hoboken Avenue LLC, four-one-four-dash-four-thirty-two Hoboken Avenue, block six-seven-zero-one, lot six-two-twelve. Approval, a site plan extension of the preliminary and major, major site plan approval with deviations. Applicant is Ricardo Ramos for approval of a one-year site plan extension of the previous approved preliminary and final major site plan with deviations and conditions. Properties four-seventy-seven Ocean Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey, block two-five-one-zero-one, lots twenty-two, case number is P two-zero-two-five-dash-zero-zero-five-five. Applicant is one-six-five Newark Avenue LLC for third extension of preliminary and ma, and final major site plan approval with deviation one-sixty-three-dash-one-sixty-five Newark Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey, block one-two-seven-zero-four, lots, lot fifteen, case number is P two-zero-two-five-dash-zero-zero-four-six. Eight is case number P two-zero-two-five-dash-zero-zero-three-zero. Applicant is twelve Niven LLC. Address is one-twenty Storms Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey, block one-five-zero-zero-four, lot twenty-seven, decided on March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five. Memorized on May twenty-seventh applicant, application for time extension. Ninth is case number P two-zero-two-four-dash-zero-two-four-one. Applicant, We Bill, this LLC address is three-three-two Within Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, block one-nine-zero-zero-five, lot thirty, decided on Tuesday, April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five. Memorized on May twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. Application, application for site plan amendment. Tenth is approving minor site plan, case number is P two-zero-two-five-dash-zero-zero-six, submitted by Dish Wireless LLC, fifteen Marion Police Block one-four, one-zero-four-zero-four, lot eight. And the last is Journal Square Tower LLC for preliminary and final major site plan approval with design waivers and deviations, two-nine-six-six John F. Kennedy Boulevard, also known as two-nine-five-eight John F. Kennedy Boulevard and seventy-one and seventy-three Cottage Street and sixty-nine Cottage Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, block seven-nine-zero-three, lots one-point-zero-one, also known as lot one-two and three and four. Lot case number is P two-zero-two-four-dash-zero-two-one-zero.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, could we have a roll call, please? Active Vice Chair Gangatton.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel. Commissioner Torres. Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries on for favor to memorialize resolutions.
All right, thank you, everybody.
So before we adjourn, I just want to wish fellow Commissioner David Cruz all the best as this is his last meeting on the planning board. Until maybe he gets picked again down the pike, so best wishes, Dave.
Thank you, David. Thank you for all the years. I wish you waited until tomorrow to announce it, but thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn, please?